Good morning, Commissioners. This is a public hearing, public meeting of December 13th, 2016. I would like to call the roll. Chair Shrinivasan?
Here.
Commissioner Bland?
Here.
Commissioner Chapin? Commissioner Chen?
Here.
Commissioner Devonshire?
Here.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Here.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Here.
Commissioner Lutpe? Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Here.
Commissioner Voss?
Here.
Good morning, Commissioners. First item on the Research Department public meeting agenda. LP 2590 Sullivan Thompson Historic District. Item proposed for designation and approximately 157 building districts that reflects the development of this portion of the South Village, primarily comprising residential buildings, many with commercial storefronts, and including institutional buildings largely constructed between the early 19th century and 1920. Corinne Engelbert presenting from the Research Department.
Good morning. The proposed Sullivan Thompson Historic District includes approximately 157 buildings, which speak to the growth of the neighborhood from its origins as a residential rowhouse neighborhood in the early 19th century to a vibrant mixed-use working-class neighborhood in the early 20th century. The architecture in the proposed historic district reflects the waves of immigration that transformed this neighborhood and much of New York City, beginning in the mid-19th century and into the early 20th century. Through designating this district, we seek to recognize that important cultural history and how those waves of immigration shaped New York City's identity. On November 29th, 2016, the Landmarks Preservation Commission held a public hearing on the proposed Sullivan Thompson Historic District. At the hearing, 28 people testified in support, including Councilmember Johnson, Borough President Brewer, New York State Assembly member, or like representatives of Community Board Two, and others. The Commission also received 414 letters of support. At the public hearing, five people testified in opposition to designation, including a number of property owners. The Commission received one letter in opposition. The proposed boundaries for the Sullivan Thompson Historic District are roughly bounded by West Houston Street to the north, Watts Street to the south, Avenue of Americas to the west, and Thompson Street to the east. I will begin the presentation with a look at the context of the proposed district, followed by the history and development of the district, an analysis of the buildings within our proposed boundaries, and end by addressing the public testimony. The South Village can loosely be defined as the area south of Washington Square Park and east of 7th Avenue, roughly located between Greenwich Village and Soho. The neighborhood is significant for its immigrant history, including its Italian-American population, which is identified in this map from 1920. The architecture of the South Village, which is largely residential, consists primarily of tenement buildings and is architecturally distinct from Soho to the east and Greenwich Village to the west. The neighborhood underwent major changes from 1903 to the 1930s when Watts Street and Avenue of Americas were extended and Houston Street was widened, leading to the demolition of many of the neighborhood's buildings and breaking the South Village into four distinct parts. Beginning in the 1960s with the creation of the Landmarks Preservation Commission, portions of the South Village and surrounding neighborhoods were designated as historic districts. The first of these was the Charlton King Van Dam Historic District, which was designated in 1966 and contains the city's largest concentration of federal-style rowhouses. In 1967, the McDougal-Sullivan Gardens Historic District was designated. The district consists of a small enclave of Greek Revival rowhouses. The Soho Cast-Iron Historic District is a former manufacturing district that contains the world's largest collection of buildings with cast iron fronts. It was designated in 1973. In 2010, the Greenwich Village Historic District Extension Two and the Soho Cast-Iron Historic District Extension were designated. And in 2013, the northern portion of the South Village was designated as the South Village Historic District. That 250-building, a residential and commercial district, is known for its immigrant heritage and Bohemian history. This map shows the location of all of the historic districts in the vicinity of our proposed historic district. This summer, in response to a request from the community, the Research Department undertook an extensive survey of the undesignated portion of the South Village, which was west of the Soho Cast-Iron Historic District Extension and bounded by three major thoroughfares: Houston Street, Avenue of Americas, and Watts Street. The area is a distinctive enclave amidst these existing districts. After extensive research that factored in building date, typology, and integrity, the Landmarks Preservation Commission is proposing a district within the red boundaries of this The Sullivan Thompson Historic District's early development in the 1810s and 1820s occurred in concert with that of the surrounding areas. Between 1810 and 1840, the Eighth Ward, which contained the Sullivan Thompson Historic District, more than tripled in population, from fewer than 10,000 residents to nearly 30,000. The district's earliest houses are characteristic of the distinctive residential architecture of the federal period, while the later rowhouses reflect the increasing popularity of the Greek Revival style. Large number of immigrants began to settle in the Sullivan Thompson Historic District during the mid-19th century. The majority were Irish and German, though there were sizable populations from France, England, and other Western European countries. The economic depression following the panic of 1837 had slowed construction throughout the city, and there was a severe shortage of available space for the newly arrived immigrants. One common solution to the crisis was to subdivide existing rowhouses, initially tended for one or two families into a number of smaller apartments. At least as early as the 1840s, however, many owners within the district had begun to enlarge their buildings to accommodate several families. Common alterations included altering attic stories to full height, adding whole floors, constructing rear extensions, and incorporating storefronts. Oftentimes, architectural elements were updated at the same time to accord with the latest styles. In addition to the conversion of existing housing stock, purpose-built tenements began to be constructed in the historic district in the 1850s and in increasing numbers by the 1870s to house the area's working class and immigrant population. These early tenements were typically designed in the Italianate and Neo-Grec styles. In addition to European immigrants, the blocks that comprise the Sullivan Thompson Historic District were also home to a sizable African-American population. While Thompson Street, between Canal Street and West Fourth Street, was considered the heart of Little Africa, the two sides of Sullivan Street between Broome Street Eight and Spring Streets had 21 buildings with African-American tenants by 1870. Reformers, including Jacob Rees and Louis Hine, documented the area with a particular focus on black-and-tan and saloons like the Knickerbocker at 57 Sullivan Street, which controversially served a multiracial rather than segregated clientele. A major attempt to address crowded and unsanitary living conditions within working-class tenement districts was made with the Tenement House Act of 1879. This legislation banned interior rooms having no access to light and air and produced what are referred to as old-law tenements. The Neo-Grec style remained popular throughout the 1880s, but was eventually eclipsed by the Queen Anne and Renaissance Revival styles. By the 1890s, the immigrant residents of the Sullivan Thompson Historic District were overwhelmingly Italian in origin, making the area one of the most densely populated Italian communities in New York's history. Italian immigrants forged a vibrant community anchored by the Church of St. Anthony of Padua and a number of Italian-owned businesses. A new level of housing reform was achieved at the turn of the century with the Tenement House Act of 1901, known as the New Law, which was the result of greater public awareness of the substandard conditions persisting in the city's tenements. The 1901 law proved to be the most comprehensive legislation to date, increasing light and air requirements and requiring one toilet per apartment. Within the Sullivan Thompson Historic District, over 30 tenements were built after the passage of the Tenement Housing Act of 1901, and the majority were designed in the Renaissance Revival style. The last tenement to be constructed within the district was built in 1914. The proposed Sullivan Thompson Historic District includes rowhouses, tenements, commercial structures, and institutions with streetscapes that illustrate the growth of the neighborhood. There are five existing landmarks within the proposed district, all of which are early rowhouses. The district includes four buildings that are currently under construction and three vacant lots. The district also contains one park, the Suviya Playground, which is centrally located within the district. We identified two major waves of construction in the neighborhood. The first occurred in the early 19th century and includes most of the neighborhood's rowhouses. The second occurred primarily after the Civil War and lasted until 1916. We determined that roughly 20% of the buildings were built prior to 1850. They are primarily federal rowhouses, which you can see on this map. Roughly 15% of the buildings date from 1851 to 1878, and these include the neighborhood's pre-law tenements. From 1879 to 1900, approximately 20% of the district's buildings were built, and these include the neighborhood's old-law tenements. Almost 30% of the buildings were constructed between 1901 to 1916, and this period includes the neighborhood's new-law tenements. After 1916, new construction dropped off dramatically. Only one building was built between 1916 and the onset of the Great Depression in 1929. However, many of the neighborhood's rowhouses continued to undergo alterations. Only 15% of the area's buildings were built after 1930. In addition to building date, we examined building typology for buildings within the proposed district. As this map demonstrates, the district consists primarily of residential buildings with a few institutional and commercial buildings. The area's residential buildings include rowhouses, tenements, and apartment buildings. There are three categories of tenement buildings within the study area: pre-law, old-law, and new-law tenements. The neighborhood has several loft buildings, one building that was historically a stable, and a utility building which belonged to the Manhattan Railroad Company. There are two categories of institutional buildings within the study area: religious and educational. These include the Church of St. Anthony of Padua, shown on the left, and St. Anthony's School on the right. One of the elements that shapes the streetscapes and sense of place in this neighborhood are the large number of historic storefronts. We counted a number of intact historic storefronts within the proposed historic district and many others that retain historic elements. These historic storefronts are a defining characteristic of the neighborhood that express the commercial and immigrant history. At the public hearing and in written testimony, concerns were raised by property owners and the Real Estate Board of New York about the Commission's choice of boundaries and the inclusion of non-contributing buildings and vacant lots within the proposed district. Areas of concern included the southernmost block of the district located between Broome and Watts Street, McDougal Street, Houston Street, and properties along the eastern side of Thompson Street. The research staff has carefully reviewed the testimony. The following slides will address the reasons why we feel the proposed boundaries are justified. The proposed Sullivan Thompson Historic District is a distinctive enclave that is nestled between a number of major thoroughfares and several historic districts that in many ways define the boundaries of the proposed district. The tenementized rowhouses, purpose-built tenements, and commercial and institutional buildings within the district represent historical patterns related to immigration and migration within New York City. The first major change to the neighborhood's street grid occurred with the extension of Watts Street in 1903 to 1904. Watts Street, originally terminated at Sullivan Street, was extended to meet West Broadway. Watts Street is the defining boundary at the southern end of the historic district. The street separates Block 476 from the neighborhood's the south. Two of the buildings on the block predate the extension of Watts Street. The block's three other buildings were completely completed shortly thereafter and tie into the neighborhood's early 20th century development. Construction of the long-planned Avenue of Americas extension was completed in 1930 and separated the neighborhood from the area to the west. The buildings on the east side of McDougal Street between Prince and Houston Streets were not demolished during the extension of Avenue of Americas and reflect the architectural history of the neighborhood. With the exception of one new building, which is under construction, all of the buildings were built prior to 1909. The extension cut through Block 504, demolishing the southern portion of the block along McDougal Street. To the north, the eastern side of McDougal Street remained intact. Today, this portion of the block includes two rowhouses, which were built in the 1830s, and three tenement buildings designed by Michael Bernstein, the district's most prolific Three of the current buildings on the north side of Block 490 survive the creation of the Avenue of Americas extension. Two of the buildings are representative of the neighborhood's commercial buildings, which were historically concentrated on Prince, Spring, and Broome Streets. In the early 1930s, West Houston Street was widened. Buildings were raised on the southern side of the street, creating irregular lots and exposing the secondary elevations of existing buildings along the newly widened street. For all intents and purposes, Houston Street accesses the northern boundary of the proposed district, separating it from the area to the north. Two surviving tenements along Houston Street anchor the northeastern and northwestern corner of the proposed district. The three vacant lots between these tenements act as bookends to these historic blocks, and the Commission feels that in an effort to protect the sense of place of the proposed Sullivan Thompson Historic District, development on these sites should be regulated. This is the same approach that was used with the vacant lots along Houston Street in the Soho Historic District. In 2010, the Soho Historic District Extension was designated, capturing several three-block buildings along the east side of Thompson Street. Our proposed boundary captures the buildings along the east side of Thompson Street that are not already designated, many of which reflect the history of the district and contribute to the district's sense of place. Some of the public testimony asked that non-contributing buildings be excluded from the district. Since its inception, the Commission has included non-contributing buildings within the borders of historic districts in an effort to avoid isolated, non-contiguous fragments that would undermine the continuity of the streetscapes as well as the sense of place. In the Sullivan Thompson Historic District, approximately 22% of the buildings are either non-contributing, as they are outside of the period of significance and do not reflect either the residential, commercial, or institutional typologies related to the immigrant history, or they are altered to the extent that there is limited historic fabric to protect and preserve. Recognizing that these buildings do not contribute to the sense of place, the Commission intends to elaborate our flexibility in the regulation of these non-contributing buildings. The proposed Sullivan Thompson Historic District includes rowhouses and tenements that represent more than 100 years of construction and design. The federal and Greek Revival rowhouses, early to new-law tenement buildings, and rich collection of historic storefronts represent the special history of this neighborhood, from its origins as a residential rowhouse neighborhood to a dynamic mixed-use working-class neighborhood in the early 20th century. Nestled between a number of major thoroughfares and designated historic districts, the proposed Sullivan Thompson Historic District is a distinctive enclave that retains its unique sense of place. Thank you.
Thank you, Corinne. Are there any questions? Are there comments? Yes, of course.
I just want to compliment the research staff, and Corinne in particular, in presenting such a complete, unusually complete and thorough history of this very interesting wedge of our city wedged in between historic districts already designated and some extraordinarily interesting, from my point of view, streetscape additions and gashes which have characterized lower Manhattan for the last 100 years or so. So I think this is not only a great addition as a historic district, but I really want to compliment the staff on such a terrific presentation.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Fred.
I certainly agree. I think one of the interesting things that this district will give the city and the Commission a chance to get into is the notion of a district that is, in significant part, not totally, but in significant part, being landmarked for cultural and historic reasons as opposed to for aesthetic ones. Tenements are a very lovely, interesting part of the streetscape, but they have a very complicated history as housing at the least. But I think that what we're doing here is we're saying that this is significant because of the immigrant history and the place that this body of housing and building stock played in that, and I think that's an interesting challenge that we'll grapple with over time. And I think it's a challenge that I'm interested to see how it plays out.
Yes, Huddy?
Yes, and just to add to that point, I think I've never before been as aware of the sort of the meaning of sense of place as I am in this case, which is to say that and following Michael's point about, you know, the cultural implications, let's say, rather than the aesthetic or the merging of the two. But I keep asking myself, what would it mean if this area, this district in the making, were in fact to be lost? And there's little doubt that without designation, it likely would be. And I don't like to think of it as a protective device necessarily, but I think it would be a tremendous loss of sense of place. And so I really commend the staff for an incredible job presenting to us. Thank you.
All right. I just also want to echo what my Commissioner said today. The research team has been excellent in putting this proposal together. They've been incredibly thorough in analyzing the district, and it was a challenging district because it has a very strong sense of place, but there have been alterations over time as well. And I think Corinne and her team really sort of delved into it and found, I think, an order and a history to those alterations as well, especially during the period of significance, which is what is driving this district. So I want to thank the team and in particular Corinne Engelbert, Sarah Moses, Jessica Baldwin, Ryder, and Michael Kratzis for pulling all this information together. And I just want to note again, as some of the Commissioners said today, we protect historic sections of the city, not only for their architectural distinction, but also representing the social and cultural patterns that provide insight to New York's development history. And while this is maybe not the most pristine buildings, it is the overlay of social and cultural history that creates this neighborhood, which reflects the past, and I think, as many of you said today, really deserves protection in the future. So with that, I will read the motion. I move that Landmarks Preservation Commission designate the Sullivan Thompson Historic District, Borough of Manhattan, as a New York City Historic District because it contains buildings and other improvements which have a special character and a special historical and aesthetic interest and value, and which represent one or more eras in the history of New York City, and which cause this area by reason of these factors to constitute a distinct section of the city. Further, this historic district is part of the development heritage and culture of the city, state, and nation, as set forth in the Designation Report for LP 2590 dated December 13, 2016. I further move that the district be designated with the boundaries set forth in the Commission's Designation Report and shown on the attached map.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Sullivan Thompson Historic District is now the 140th Historic District. Thank you. Okay. Commissioners, as you all know, 18 months ago, the LPC launched the backlog...
Sorry.
(inaudible).
Let's try this one. Oh, that's better, I think. 18 months ago, LPC launched the backlog initiative, a plan to efficiently and transparently address 95 properties that were placed on the Commission's calendar prior to 2010, 85% of which had been calendared 20 or more years. And as you all know, we had a long public review period, four special public hearings, which we heard 300 speakers and got thousands of pages of written testimony. And at a public meeting on February 23rd, 2016, the Commission made decisions on all of the properties. At that hearing, research staff recommended that the Commission prioritize 28 properties for designation, and on that day, the Commission added two additional properties to prioritize: Excelsior Steam Power Company Building and the Lakeman Courteille U House. To date, the Commission has designated 17 of the backlog items, and today you will be presented with the last 13 of the priority items from the backlog initiative. Staff is recommending that you vote to designate the following 10 items: 183 to 195 Broadway Building, St. Barbara's Roman Catholic Church, Bound Street Community Church, Broome Cottage, Lakeman Courteille U Taylor House, Excelsior Steam Power Company Building, Bergdorf Goodman, 412 East 85th Street House, Young Men's Christian Association Building Harlem Branch, now Jackie Robinson YMCA Youth Center, and Lowe's 175th Street Theater. These include the two additional items that the Commissioners prioritized in February. Two items: the Edgar J. Coffin Conference Rooms, also known as the Alto Rooms, and Immaculate Conception Church. The staff recommends that the Commission remove from the calendar for reasons that we will present to you today. Finally, as we will also present, the IRT powerhouse will remain on the calendar while the staff and Con Edison continue to develop a framework for regulating work at this operating power plant. So with that, we'll begin with the first item. LP 1504, 183 to 195 Broadway, the 183 to 195 Broadway Building in Brooklyn, Block 2446, Lot 51. An item proposed for designation, an Italianate-style building designed by William Ditmars and built in 1882. And we have Corinne Engelbert again.
On October 8th, 2015, 183 to 195 Broadway was heard as part of the Landmarks Preservation Commission's backlog initiative. At the hearing, eight speakers testified in support of the designation, including a representative of Councilmember Antonio Renozo. No one spoke in opposition. The site had previously been heard on July 10th, 1990, and September 11th, 1990. Located at the northeast corner of Broadway and Driggs Avenue in Williamsburg, 183 to 195 Broadway is one of only a small number of cast-iron buildings that were constructed in the borough of Brooklyn. Built in 1882 to 1883 for James R. Sparrow and his son James R. Sparrow Jr., the building was part of a wave of post-Civil War redevelopment along Broadway, which led to the erection of monumental banks and premier stores and transformed Lower Broadway into Williamsburg's principal artery. Plans for the building were filed by a local Williamsburg architect, William B. Ditmars. However, the building's cast-iron facade was designed by Hermann J. Schwartzman. Schwartzman was a German immigrant who was the architect-in-chief of the 1876 Centennial Exposition in Philadelphia. He moved to New York City in the early 1878 and designed a variety of buildings, including the Mercantile Exchange Building in the NoHo Historic District. The building's facade was manufactured by Atlantic Iron Works, a Manhattan-based iron company. The building's design is an innovative example of the Neo-Grec style, with ornamental detail that demonstrates the influence of the aesthetic movement on American architecture. The building originally served as The building originally served as a commercial structure with stores located on the ground floor. The completion of the Williamsburg Bridge in 1903 transformed the neighborhood and appears to have coincided with the conversion of 183-195 Broadway from commercial space to primarily manufacturing use. The building’s current owners, the Foreman family, purchased the building in 1937 and used the building for approximately 50 years as a manufacturing site for their metalware Today, 183-195 Broadway’s cast iron facade remains virtually intact above the first story. The building is significant for its inventive neo-grec design with aesthetic movement details and is among the finest cast iron buildings surviving in Brooklyn. Thank you.
Thank you, Corinne. Are there any questions? All right. Would you raise your hand?
This is a motion to designate 183-195 Broadway Building in the Borough of Brooklyn. I move that the Landmarks Preservation Commission designate the 183-195 Broadway Building, 183-195 Broadway, Borough of Brooklyn, as a New York City landmark because of its special character and special historical and aesthetic interest and value as part of the development, heritage, and cultural characteristics of the city, state, and nation as set forth in the Designation Report for LP-1504 dated December 13, 2016. I also move that the Borough of Brooklyn tax map Block 2446, Lot 51, be designated as a landmark site.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This building has been designated. Thank you, Corinne, for all your work.
The next item, St. Barbara’s Roman Catholic Church, LP 1201, 138 Bleeker Street, Brooklyn, Block 3306, Lot 6. Item proposed for designation, a Spanish Mission Revival neo-platteresque-style church designed by Helmy &amp; Huberty and built in 1907 to 1910. Donald Pressa, research staff, presenting.
St. Barbara’s Roman Catholic Church is located in the Bushwick neighborhood of Brooklyn. Last year, as part of the special backlog hearing on October 8, five people testified in favor of the designation and one in opposition. Written submissions, both in favor and opposed, were also received. The church, which is located at the intersection of Bleeker Street and Central Avenue, is one of the most unusual and distinctive ecclesiastical buildings in New York City. It was built between 1907 and 1910 and is one of the earliest churches in the northeastern United States to incorporate the Spanish colonial revival style of architecture, which is fairly uncommon in the region. Constructed of yellow brick and white terracotta, the church towers above the low-rise residences of the surrounding area and is one of Bushwick’s most imposing buildings. St. Barbara’s Parish, which was founded in 1893 by German immigrant families, has continued to serve successive waves of residents of varying ethnicities and nationalities. The church was designed by Helmy &amp; Huberty, a leading Brooklyn architectural firm that was responsible for many important public and institutional buildings. The firm’s buildings were designed in a wide variety of styles and include such landmarks as the Boathouse in Prospect Park and the Winthrop Park Shelter Pavilion in Monsignor McGoldrick Park, as well as many buildings located within designated historic districts. The Spanish colonial revival style is unusual for a church in the northeastern United States, particularly for one built as early as 1907. The style, based on the architecture of 16th and 17th century Spain, often combines large unornamented wall areas with sections that are embellished with highly ornate and complex classically-inspired forms. The entryways are generally given the most ornate treatment. Spanish architecture was brought to the New World by the early settlers in Mexico and the American Southwest. The design of St. Barbara’s appears to have been inspired by the mission churches built in these areas. The church’s cruciform and plan in a large Renaissance-inspired dome covers the church crossing. The church’s Central Avenue facade has a terracotta frontispice in the form of a triumphal arch that gives emphasis to the main facade. This frontispice is enlivened by projecting Corinthian columns, twisted squat columns, sculptural panels, and bands. Highly ornate terracotta towers rise above the main facade. It is clear from the Commission’s 1980s materials that the Commission was proposing to designate the church building and not directory, which is not mentioned in any of the Commission’s materials. However, as was typical with designations, however, as was typical with designations from this time, the entire lot, which included the church, directory, which is the three-story building on the far left, and a connector building, which is that one story at the center of the photograph, was calendared and heard. Given the Commission’s original intent, research staff is recommending a designation of a lot in part consisting of the Helmy &amp; Huberty Church outlined in solid red, but excluding the later, less elaborate rectory built within the dotted red line. In order to ensure the entirety of the church is included, staff recommends the landmark site include the small connector building between the rectory and the church. In conclusion, St. Barbara’s is an important presence in the Bushwick neighborhood, both in terms of its architecture and its contribution to the social fabric of the neighborhood. It remains remarkably intact as one of Bushwick’s most prominent and significant religious structures.
Thank you, Donald. Are there any questions? I just want to also note for the record that we’ve received a letter from Councilman Esma yesterday in support of this designation. Do you need to move a reading of the record?
I move that the Landmarks Preservation Commission designate St. Barbara’s Roman Catholic Church, 138 Bleeker Street, AKA 122-140 Bleeker Street, and 299-307 Central Avenue, Borough of Brooklyn, as a New York City landmark because of its special character and special historical and aesthetic interest and value as part of the development, heritage, and cultural characteristics of the city, state, and nation as set forth in the Designation Report for LP-1201 dated December 13, 2016. I also move that the Borough of Brooklyn tax map Block 3306, Lot 6, in part, beginning at the southwest corner of Lot 6, northerly along the western property line of Lot 6, to a point in said property line formed by its intersection with a line extending westerly from the northern point of the church’s apps and southern building line of the adjacent rectory, continuing easterly along said building line to the eastern property line of Lot 6, southerly along said property line, and westerly along the southern property line of Lot 6 to the point of the beginning, be designated as its landmark site.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? St. Barbara’s is now designated.
Next item is LP 1192, 375-395, East 150th Street, Immaculate Conception Church of the Blessed Virgin Mary, convent and priest residence, Bronx Block 2397, Lot 17, a Romanesque revival-style ecclesiastical structure designed by Henry Bruins and built in 1887. Commissioners, at the February 23, 2016, Special Backlog Public Meeting, staff recommended to prioritize for designation the Romanesque revival-style parish church of the Immaculate Conception of the Blessed Virgin Mary. While the calendared site had included the church, rectory, and covenant, or convent, excuse me, staff had recommended designation of a lot in part to include only the church. At the time of the hearing, the councilmember’s seat was vacant, and during the backlog initiative, the previous councilmember did not express support or opposition. The parish has long been in opposition to designation. Subsequently, Councilmember Rafael Salamanca Jr., who now represents the district, submitted written opposition to the designation. The item had been on the agenda for the June 28 public meeting, but after receiving the councilmember’s letter of opposition, we delayed the vote to work to garner support, but have been unable to do so. Given the councilmember’s opposition and that of the parish, staff recommends removing this item from the calendar. However, such an action would be taken without prejudice to recalendar the church in the future.
Yeah, I think the Commission is aware that religious properties have been particularly challenging to designate over the years, and religious properties, their owners, express concerns about being able to fulfill their programmatic mission and allow for worship to continue at their buildings. I think, you know, we’ve seen, and the Commission has designated, many religious properties, and we regulate them and work with them to ensure that their needs can be fulfilled. I think this is one case where, despite many conversations that were very open and robust and honest, we were not able to persuade the parish to change their position on this. But I will say that in this entire effort, which is our backlog initiative, we have managed to designate around seven religious properties, including St. Barbara’s that we just designated. So I just wanted to comment on that. So with that, I’ll make a motion, based on the record, presentation, and discussion, that the Landmarks Preservation Commission takes no action with respect to the following calendared item in the Borough of Bronx because the site has not priority this time. 375-395, East 150th Street, Immaculate Conception Church, Blessed Virgin Mary, convent and priest residence, LP 1192. And to remove this item and its associated tax map, block and lot from the Commission’s calendar, and this action shall be without prejudice to the Commission reconsidering and recalendering this item in the future. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This item is removed from the table.
Next item, LP 2137, 143-11, 143-19, Roosevelt Avenue, also known as 3801 Bound Street, Protestant Reformed Dutch Church of Flushing, Bound Street Community Church, Queens Block 5022, Lot 1 in part. Item proposed for designation, a Romanesque revival-style church designed by Edward Richardson and built in 1891 to 92. Mary Ann Hurley, Research Department, to present.
Good morning, Commissioners. The Protestant Reformed Dutch Church of Flushing, today known as the Bound Street Community Church, is located in downtown Flushing at the intersection of Bound Street and Roosevelt Avenue. At the public hearing on November 15, both the pastor and a Bound Street Church trustee spoke in opposition to designation. Ten speakers supported designation, including Councilmember Koo and representatives of various historical and community organizations. When the church was calendared in 2003 as a lot in part, the proposal did include both the 1892 church and the 1926 annex, as shown in the dotted lines. But as part of the backlog initiative meeting on February 23, 2016, the Commission prioritized designation also as a lot in part, but with the removal of the annex and the parking lot from the landmark site. As shown at the public hearing last month, November 15, the proposed boundary in solid red includes only the 1892 church building for designation. Built by a reformed Dutch congregation in 1892, the church is significant as an excellent example of the Romanesque revival style, notable for its exceptional corner bell tower, intricate and inventive brickwork, a variety of round-arched openings, and opalescent stained glass windows. With a long history in New York, the Reformed Dutch Church established congregations during and after the time of the Dutch colony. As the town of Flushing developed and prospered, a reformed church was established in 1842. Their first building is shown on the left. In 1873, they purchased a lot for a larger building, but it was not until 1891 and under the leadership of Reverend Demarest that construction of the present church began. Several newspaper articles attributed the design to the architect George E. Potter. He had a practice during the 1870s in Springfield, Massachusetts, and later in Hartford, Connecticut. He designed approximately 25 churches in New England and Long Island. His memorial hall in Monson, Massachusetts, listed on the National Register and seen on the right, is similar in design to the Flushing Church. Edward Richardson of Flushing is sometimes cited as the architect, but by most accounts, he was the building contractor. He was a prominent businessman and built many residences in Flushing. The church was dedicated November of 1892. In addition to the main sanctuary assembly space, the northernmost spaces seen toward the left of the building provided rooms for a chapel, Sunday school, library, and upstairs Many churches in the later decades of the 19th century were influenced by the celebrated architect H.H. Richardson’s interpretation of the Romanesque. Some of the Richardsonian characteristics are seen here, such as clear, strong massing, a picturesque roofline, rusticated base, and a variety of boldly contrasting features, such as the dramatic contrast in height and mass of the very dominant bell tower with the diminutive arcade at the front facade. At the time of dedication in 1892, the Flushing Journal noted that “the windows are all the work of the Tiffany Glass Company of New York.” The Tiffany window seen on the left is typical of the original opalescent windows still in place today. The two window sections seen on the right, installed later as memorials, are the work of Agnes Fairchild Northrup, a longtime parishioner and a major stained glass artist at Tiffany Studios from 1884 until 1936. In the 17th century, the citizens of Flushing formally declared freedom of religion by issuing the Flushing Remonstrance. Continuing this tradition of faith and tolerance, this multi-denominational church reflects the cultural, ethnic, and religious diversity of the Flushing community. In conclusion, although the church is located just a few blocks from the busy and expanding downtown, it continues to give the neighborhood a strong sense of the 19th century streetscape. Retaining much of its original materials and workmanship, the church congregations have diligently and sensitively maintained the building. It is one of downtown Flushing’s most prominent and historically significant structures.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Are there any questions? Comments? Yes.
I’m just happy to see this, and I know the staff has worked very diligently with the church, who had some concerns. It’s not only the structure itself and its history, but the Tiffany windows, and it sort of reminds everybody about the role of women in the Tiffany firm, which was very large. And, you know, I just think it’s, for so many reasons, it’s a great example.
Thank you. All right.
This is a motion to designate the Protestant Reformed Dutch Church of Flushing, the Bound Street Community Church in the Borough of Queens. I move that the Landmarks Preservation Commission designate the Protestant Reformed Dutch Church of Flushing, Bound Street Community Church, 143-11 Roosevelt Avenue, also known as 38-01 Bound Street, in the Borough of Queens, as a New York City landmark because of its special character and special historical and aesthetic interest and value as part of the development, heritage, and cultural characteristics of the city, nation, and state as set forth in the Designation Report for LP 2137 dated December 13, 2016. I also move that Borough of Queens tax map Lot 5022, Lot 1 in part, consisting of the portion of the lot bounded by a line beginning at the southwest corner of the property line of Lot 1, northerly along the western property line of Lot 1 to the northern property line of Lot 1, easterly along the northern property line of Lot 1, to a point on a line extending northerly from the western building line of the east transept of the 1892 building, southerly along said line along the exterior wall of the east transept, and continuing along said line to the southern property line of Lot 1, then westerly to the place of beginning, as shown on the attached map, be designated as its landmark site.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bound Street Community Church of Town designated landmark. Thank you, Mary Ann, for all your work.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Commissioners, next item, LP 2444, 2286 Richmond Road. Commissioners, next item, LP 2444, 2286 Richmond Road, Lakeman House, Staten Island, Block 3618, Lot 7. Item proposed for designation, a Dutch colonial house with an 18th century addition, designed by an unknown architect and built circa 1683 to 1714. Gail Harris, Research Staff, presenting.
Good morning. I will be presenting two Staten Island properties that both have the distinction of being on their original sites. With this house, I'll be looking at the building in some detail in terms of its architectural history and then talk a little bit more about its historical context. At the special backlog hearing on October 22nd, 2015, five people spoke and two wrote in support. A representative of the owner asked that the designation be limited to the building if it was to be designated. The council member and borough president wrote in opposition. The Lakeman Cortel U Taylor House is a rare Dutch colonial style farmhouse, significant both as an early example of Dutch colonial building, of a Dutch colonial building with the gambrel roof, and for its associations with Staten Island's history. It is particularly noteworthy as the home of Aaron Cortel U, who was one of the founders of the Moravian Church on Staten Island and who played an important role in the American Revolutionary War on the island. Located on the south side of Richmond Road, opposite Moravian Cemetery in New Dorp, the house is composed of one-room deep, two-story main section, which has a gambrel roof and a one-story wing with the gable roof. Both portions are built of a regular field stone. With wood at the gambrel gable ends above the first story, it appears that the one-story wing, which is very low in scale, is the earliest part of the house, dating from the late 17th or more likely, early 18th century. Differences in the window openings and the placement of the fireplaces in the gambrel roof sections suggest that you'd like to do a two campaign. You'll notice the, these fireplaces are slightly out of alignment. The beams visible in the first story rooms of the gambrel roof section help to identify this as a Dutch house and confirm its 18th century date. The interior is not included in the designation. I'm comparing it to a 17th century building. You can, and I think you can see in looking at the difference in the size of the beams, that this is the sort of middle period of development rather than really early. Also, it has an English form of fireplace rather than a Dutch fireplace, which doesn't have jambs. Other features of the Lakeman Cortel U Taylor House that are characteristic of the Dutch American houses include the materials, massing and height, massing, footprint and height, rooflines, and small window openings. As was characteristic of colonial farmhouses, the house was originally oriented facing southward for maximum light and did not have a door facing Richmond Road until the 20th The Lakeman Cortel U House also has the distinction of incorporating one of the earliest gambrel roofs on an 18th century house on Staten Island. The land on which the house is situated was granted in 1676 to Louis Lakeman. It is believed that one of his sons, Abraham Lakeman, built a one-room house, now the one-story wing, sometime after 1683. In 1714, Peter Cortel U deeded that house and 40 acres of land to his daughter Dorothea and her husband Red Vanderbilt. It subsequently passed through several owners and in 1751 was acquired by Aaron Cortel U, a carpenter, prosperous farmer, and leading citizen of Staten Island. In the early years of the Revolutionary War, Cortel U was selected to represent Richmond County in the first and third New York provincial congresses and to assemble a group of militias to defend against the British. When the British invaded Staten Island with an overwhelming force in July 1776, these plans were abandoned. I'm showing you a detail of an engraving by one of the British generals, and you'll notice the British troops and the British Navy in the harbor. Cortel U eventually sided with the loyalists, and in July 1779, this house was the site of Whig rebel Ray, in which Cortel U and William Smith, a prominent loyalist from Woodbridge, New Jersey, were abducted. Aaron Cortel U left this house and farm to his daughter Elizabeth, wife of Richard Seaman. In 1794, the Seamen sold the property to Joseph Taylor, a New York, New Dorp merchant. It remained in the ownership of the Taylor and related Barton families until 1880, when Linia and Samuel Barton sold it to Realtor David J. Tyson. By 1925, an entrance had been created on the north side of the house and dormers added to the second floor gambrel. Flores Xavier Kirk Cawthorne acquired the house in 1928, which he used both as a residence and for his business. He added a full second story over the kitchen wing and several commercial additions. It remains in the ownership of the Barton family, and it's currently used as offices for their business. Extensive restorative work, including the rebuilding of modern additions, was done in 2000 to 2002. It is a rare example of Dutch American architecture. It's notable for its associations with the American Revolutionary War and Staten Island history.
Thank you, Gail. Are there any questions? It was a very fascinating presentation and fascinating to study Staten Island, but also just the kind of forensics that our research department engages into by establishing dates accurately. Sometimes you can't actually find the material in books and documents, and so I just wanted to compliment you, Gail, for really doing a thorough job and really making this forward. Yes.
So how are we dealing with the tax lot around the house? Is it, because there are so many buildings on this?
It's just the footprint of the building.
Just the building itself?
Yes. And I just want to note also that the site is under the jurisdiction of the Board of Standard Appeals for use change, so it would continue to be regulated by them. Also, that this was built in a district which has front yard requirements, so in fact, if we think about where this building is located within the site, the area in front of it towards the street actually can't be built on because of the yard requirements. And if they had to, they'd have to go to the BSA and try and waive that. It gives us the opportunity to engage in the process as well. Yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment that it was, you know, I think it's particularly gratifying that we were able to add this, you know, because originally it wasn't planned, and it's such an important building. I mean, there's so, just such a rarity, and it's terrific we're able to at least protect, you know, protect the building, you know, so.
Andy, you want to read that?
I move that the Landmarks Preservation Committee designate Lakeman Cortel U Taylor House at 2286 Richmond Road, Borough of Staten Island, as a New York City landmark because of its special character and special historic and aesthetic interest and value as part of the development, heritage, and cultural characteristics of the city, state, and nation as set forth in the designation report for LP 2444 dated December 13th, 2016. I also move that Borough of Staten Island tax map Block 3618, Lot 7 in part, consisting of the land on which the building is situated, be designated as its landmark site.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Lakeman House now designated a landmark. Thank you, Gail Harris, for all your work.
Okay, the next item, LP 2068, 4746 Amboy Road, Broome Cottage, Staten Island, Block 5391, Lot 2. Item proposed for designation, a vernacular style cottage designed by an unknown architect and built in the early 18th century. Gail Harris, Research Department, presenting.
At the backlog hearing on October 15th, 2015, ten people spoke in support of the designation, including representatives of the owner and Assembly Member Borelli, who is now the council member. The Broome Cottage is a rare Dutch American farmhouse, significant as a reminder of Staten Island's rural heritage and its vernacular architectural traditions. Located on the south side of Amboy Road in Anandale, Staten Island, this historic house is composed of one-room deep, one and one-half story H-frame western wing that appears to date from the first half of the 18th century, likely the 1720s or 1730s. A center one and one-half story H-frame stairwell section that probably dates from the 1790s or early 1800s, and a taller one and one-half story eastern wing that probably was erected prior to 1840. I am showing a historic image of the south facade from the 1920s in which the construction stages are more clearly defined. The first story field stone chimney wall, the Dutch H-framing with its attic knee walls, and small windows are characteristic features of Dutch American architecture. I'm going to remind you, in Dutch architecture, upper story floor joists are tenanted into principal post to create a series of H-shaped structural members with plates placed at the top of the post to secure the frame. It's sort of like a series of goalposts tied at the bottom and at the top, and it creates a characteristic profile. The low ceiling height and modest size of the house are indicative of the early date of the original one-room portion of the house. Two interior photographs reveal aspects of the construction that are not readily seen on the exterior. The junction of the original wing and midsection evident in the change in floor levels, and the heavy timber framing in the basement of the 19th century wing. As was typical of colonial farmhouses, the house was originally oriented facing southward for maximum light and did not have a door facing Amboy Road until the 20th century. The photo is from 1910. The house occupies a portion of an 80-acre patent granted to Daniel Stillwell in the late 17th century. This land eventually passed to members of the Poyant family, and sometime in the mid 18th century, a portion of James Poyant's farm fronting onto Amboy Road was sold to Dr. Oliver Taylor, a physician who lived nearby in Westfield, just north of Amboy Road. The top arrow points to Dr. Taylor's house, the lower arrow to this building. This house, likely built as a tenant property, was probably begun under the Poyants and expanded under the Taylors. It remained in the ownership of the Taylor family until the mid 1840s. Around 1855, James Foster, an English immigrant gardener, moved to this house with his wife and two stepchildren and established a plant nursery, which was next to Frederick Lowell Olmsted's property. Later in his career, Foster supplied plants for the Olmsted design Vanderbilt Musoleum. In 1887, following the death of his wife, Foster's stepdaughter, Annie Brom, her husband Stephen and their six children moved into the house with Foster. The Bromes resided here until 1910. Foster is in the middle, Brom's next to him on the left. In the 1920s, the real estate developer and historian Cornelius J. Kauf leased the farmhouse as an office to sell building lots for the Woods of Orange Development. At that time, the old porch additions were removed. Later in the 1920s, an entrance was created on Amboy Road, and the house was clad with shingles. Although the house has undergone some alterations, it remains, it retains its historic form and many of its characteristic Dutch American features. Today, Broome Cottage survives as a rare example of the small vernacular, of the small vernacular farmhouses that were once common in the 18th and early 19th century rural landscape, but have all but disappeared. It is a significant example of Dutch American design and a rare reminder of Staten Island's rural history. Its site is now part of the New York City Parks and Recreation Department's Blue Heron Park.
Thank you, Gail. Any questions? Yes, yes.
Once again, I'm struck by the research department, which I consider to be the best in the world. In the case of these last two buildings, I really have to give kudos to Gail, who has been able to suss out the details in these things. You know, these, this era of building is probably the most difficult to pin down to dates because there was so much material that was reused, because cutting down a tree and turning it into a beam is a laborious process. And so sometimes it comes down to the details of nail heads and things like that. And Gail has done an amazing job in informing us about what's going on with these two buildings. And thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Gail. It really is incredibly impressive. Diane, you want to read them?
Sure. Sorry. Thank you. In the matter of, I'm sorry? Oh, yeah, yeah, I don't know what I'm doing here. Strange. Thank you. A motion to designate Broome Cottage, Borough of Staten Island. I move that the Landmark Preservation Commission designate Broome Cottage, 4746 Amboy Road, Borough of Staten Island, as a New York City landmark because of its special character and special historical and aesthetic interest and value as part of the development, heritage, and cultural characteristics of the city, state, and nation as set forth in the designation report for LP 2068 dated December 13th, 2016. I also move that the Borough of Staten Island tax map Block 5391, Lot 2, be designated as its landmark site.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Broome Cottage is now designated a landmark.
Commissioners, next item, LP 0962, 33 to 43 Gold Street, Excelsior Power Company Building, Manhattan Block 0077, Lot 24 in part. Item proposed for designation, a Romanesque revival style building designed by William F. Grinnell and built circa 1840s to 1888. Michael Karatsis, Research Department, presenting.
Commissioners, the Excelsior Steam Power Company Building was previously heard at the special backlog hearing of November 12th, 2015. At that hearing, five people spoke in support of the proposed designation, including the council member and borough president. The commission also received seven written submissions in support of the designation that was previously heard as the Excelsior Power Company Building. Before we begin, I'd like to note that the sidewalk bridge is in front of the building, making it difficult to get clear pictures of the entire facade, so this presentation will include some older and historic images that will be clearly labeled as such. A monumental reminder of New York's key role in the development of electric lighting and power systems in the United States, the Excelsior Steam Power Company Building. and power systems in the United States, the Excelsior Steam Power Company Building is the oldest known purpose-built commercial generating station standing in Manhattan. And it's one of the few major structures remaining from Manhattan's pioneering era for electric lighting and power, which began with the illumination of a portion of Broadway in 1880 and ended with the consolidation of dozens of utilities into the New York Edison Company in 1901. The building occupies the southern portion of Lot twenty-four. It is adjacent to another building also on Lot twenty-four that fronts on Fulton and Gold Streets and is excluded from the proposed designation. Designed by engineer and architect William C. Grinnell and constructed by master mason Robert Aldara, the Excelsior Building was operational by 1888, when it began generating and distributing electrical power to printing houses, jewelry manufacturers, and other industrial clients within the surrounding area for their elevators, presses, beveling machinery, and other equipment. Its 750-horsepower dynamos and the motors used by its customers were designed by Leo Daft, an English immigrant who came to the United States in 1866. By the mid-1880s, Daft was a leading figure in the development of commercial electric power systems, having designed the first such system for Boston in 1884. In that year, Daft also installed in Lower Manhattan New York's first two electric elevators, which were powered by a Daft generator installed alongside the engines of the Excelsior Steam Power Company in its Spruce, in its Spruce Street headquarters. Over subsequent years, Daft's electrical network powered by Excelsior's steam engines spread rapidly in Lower Manhattan, leading to the replacement of steam engines with small electric motors in many New York City businesses. Its success led Excelsior to begin planning and constructing this building in 1887. By 1888, Daft was upgrading the building's generators, which included a 10-ton, 250-horsepower model reported to be the largest dynamo in the world. Romanesque revival in style, the building features a high base decorated with foliated terracotta plaques and a metal sign identifying the building in elegant period lettering. The precision and quality of Mason Robert Dara's brickwork is evident throughout the facade, especially in its large, round arches with their deep reveals, curved profiles, intricately fitted gage bricks, and denticulated arch vaults. The Excelsior Steam Power Company Building provided electricity for lighting and power to local factories and office buildings for many years and was later converted from a generating station into a substation. In 1978, Consolidated Edison sold the building, and it was subsequently renovated for residential use. Nestled among the office towers, apartment houses, and hotels of Lower Manhattan on narrow Gold Street, the Excelsior Steam Power Company Building remains a significant link to Lower Manhattan's industrial past. Having played a major role in New York's transition from steam power to electricity, it recalls its area's former prominence as the nation's media capital and as an industrial beehive populated by hundreds of printers, jewelry makers, and other manufacturing concerns.
Thank you, Michael. Are there any questions? I can, if you want to read that.
Can I turn it? I did have a comment.
Yes, of course, Kim.
I was very happy to hear that they could do this, because this was one of the buildings I was behind, and I remember you had to work so hard with the Con Ed, with everybody, just to bring this in, and mainly because it was an industrial building that helped change Manhattan and change industry in the city and made it the great capital it is. And on top of that, it's actually a very nice building and architecturally historic, and it just wrapped everything up. And I congratulate you and the staff for getting them to go along with it, because I know it was a long and hard battle, but thank you. Motion to designate Excelsior Steam Power Company Building, Borough of Manhattan. I move that the Landmarks Preservation Commission designate the Excelsior Steam Power Company Building, thirty-three to forty-three Gold Street, Borough of Manhattan, as a New York City landmark because of its special character and special historic and aesthetic interest and as a value as part of the development, heritage, and cultural characteristics of the city, state, and nation as set forth in the designation report for LP zero-nine-six-two dated December thirteenth, 2016. I also move that the Borough of Manhattan tax map block seventy-seven, Lot twenty-four, in part consisting of former Lot twenty-five and a portion of Lot twenty-four bounded by a line beginning at the northeast corner of the Excelsior Steam Power Company Building, located at a point on the eastern lot line approximately ninety-four feet, three and a half inches south of the southwest corner of Gold Street and Fulton Street, thence running southerly along the eastern lot line approximately 125 feet, six inches to the southern lot line, thence running westerly along the southern lot line approximately ninety-sevens feet to the west, western lot line, thence running northerly along the western lot line approximately 124 feet, six, eight inches to the northwest corner of said building, thence running easterly along the exterior of the northern wall of said building approximately ninety-nine feet, eleven and a half inches to the point of beginning, be designated as its landmark site.
All in favor?
Aye.
May I pose? Excelsior Steam Power Company Building is now designated landmark.
Commissioners, next item is LP two-three-seven-four, eight-fifty, Twelfth Avenue, also known as eight-forty, Joe DiMaggio Highway, Interboro Rapid Transit Powerhouse, now Consolidated Edison Powerhouse, Manhattan Block one-one-zero-six, Lot one, in part. A Beaux-Arts-style building designed by McKimieden White and built in 1904. And the landmark site is a Borough of Manhattan Block eleven-zero-six, Lot one, in part excluding the land under the Twelfth Avenue extension. The, as I said, the IRT powerhouse was constructed to provide electrical current to eight substations that fed the signal and lighting systems of the newly completed IRT subway, and was the largest powerhouse in the world at the time it was of its completion in 1904. Designed by Stanford White of McKimieden White, it is a rare example of an industrial building by that firm. At the public meeting on February twenty-third for the backlog initiative, the commission recognized that there is no precedent for designating an operating power plant as a landmark in New York City and in potentially the nation, and that the IRT powerhouse has unique needs. The commission agreed to keep this item on the calendar to allow the staff to work with the property owner, Con Edison, to understand in greater depth their operational concerns related to designation and to explore potential solutions. The staff and Con Edison have been actively working together to identify the programmatic needs related to the production of power and to develop a designation and regulatory framework that would allow the necessary flexibility and efficiency that are imperative to Con Edison's operations. Staff recommends that the commission keep this item on the calendar until a framework is finalized, one that ensures that the utility can continue to operate and provide power to its customers in an efficient manner. We hope to bring this item back in the next year. Until that time, the property will remain calendared, and we will continue to monitor changes as we have over the past thirty-seven years.
And I just want to add to what Lisa said, that over this past, over the past nine months, we've been meeting with Con Edison regularly. I've learned more about power than I ever knew before. And, and we're going to continue to do that and strategize a plan or a framework that would allow us to designate the building and allow Con Edison to continue their operations in a seamless and efficient manner as well.
Okay, next item, LP zero-seven-three-five, seven-five-four, Fifth Avenue, Bergdorf Goodman, Manhattan Block twelve-seventy-three, Lot thirty-three. Item proposed for designation, a modern classicist-style building designed by Buckman and Con and built in 1927 to 1928. Sorry, Corinne Engelbert presenting.
On November fifth, 2015, Bergdorf Goodman was heard as part of the Landmarks Preservation Commission's backlog initiative. At the hearing, nine speakers testified in support of designation, including a representative for Assembly Member Richard N. Gottfried and Borough President Gail Brewer. Four representatives of the owner spoke in opposition. The site had previously been heard on June twenty-third, 1970, and July twenty-first, 1970. Located at the southern end of the Grand Army Plaza, seven-fifty-four Fifth Avenue occupies one of the most prominent sites on the Fifth Avenue retail corridor. The building, designed by the preeminent designer Eli Jacques Kahn, is an excellent example of modern classical design and is significant for its associations with Bergdorf Goodman, one of New York City's premier retail establishments. The site was the former location of the Vanderbilt Mansion. In response to rising property taxes and a rapidly changing neighborhood, exemplified by the construction of buildings such as the 26-story Heckshire Building, Cornelius Vanderbilt Swiddle, oh, Alice G. Vanderbilt, put the mansion up for sale. The site was ultimately purchased by the real estate developer Frederick Brown in 1926. Brown developed the site from 1927 to 1928 as seven separate but aesthetically unified buildings. Eli Jacques Kahn, one of the most important New York architects of the 20th century, designed the buildings in the modern classical style. His design was an extremely successful response to what appears to have been the requirements of the project, a design that would appeal to a high-end clientele and fit into the context of the Fifth Avenue shopping district and the architecture of the Grand Army Plaza. Bergdorf Goodman, one of New York City's most celebrated department stores, was an original tenant. The store, which originally began as a tailor shop at Fifth Avenue and Nineteenth Street, revolutionized the women's clothing industry by becoming the first American coutureia to offer ready-to-wear clothing. Like many other stores, it followed the retail migration north along Fifth Avenue, ultimately occupying the site's northernmost building on Fifty-Eighth Street and Fifth Avenue. The new location proved to be a great success. Bergdorf Goodman began to expand, first by leasing additional space in the complex and later by purchasing all of the buildings on the site. Today, Bergdorf Goodman occupies all but the southeast corner of the complex. Alterations to the first two stories have sought to unify the facade, reflecting the success of Bergdorf Goodman. Kahn's original design remains largely intact above the second story and continues to read as separate but aesthetically unified buildings. Set among a number of high-rise buildings, Bergdorf Goodman retains its historic relationship to the Grand Army Plaza. It is significant for its associations with Eli Jacques Kahn, Bergdorf Goodman, and its role in the commercial development of Fifth Avenue.
Thank you, Corinne. Are there any questions? Designation, Michael?
Okay. I move that the Landmarks Preservation Commission designate Bergdorf Goodman, seven-fifty-four Fifth Avenue, Borough of Manhattan, as the New York City landmark because of its special character and special historic and aesthetic interest and value as part of the development, heritage, and cultural characteristics of the city, state, and nation as set forth in the designation report for LP dash oh-seven-three-five dated December thirteenth, 2016. I also move that the Borough of Manhattan tax map, block twelve-seventy-three, Lot thirty-three, be designated as its landmark site.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
May I pose? Bergdorf Goodman is now designated landmark. Thank you so much.
Next item, LP two-one-one-one, eight-oh-nine United Nations Plaza, Edgar J. Kaufman Conference Rooms, Lecture Hall, and Elevator Lobby, Manhattan Block thirteen-thirty-eight, Lot seven-five-zero-three. A 20th-century, modern-style conference rooms, lecture hall, and elevator lobby designed by Alvaro Alto and Alisa Alto and built in 1964 to 65. On February twenty-third, staff had recommended that the Edgar J. Kaufman Conference Rooms remain on the calendar, with the understanding that resolution of this item will ultimately rest on a legal determination regarding the issues of accessibility. Mark Silverin will discuss those issues with you today.
Commissioners, the staff is recommending that the commission remove from the calendar the Edgar J. Kaufman Conference Rooms, the rooms. The rooms are located on the 12th floor of a condominium office building across from the United Nations Building. The State of Qatar owns two floors as does the Saudi Arabian government, both of which use the premises to house their permanent missions to the UN. Consequently, security is tight and access is limited. The Institute of International Education, IIE, owns the remaining eight floors of the building, including the rooms. IIE has stated that the rooms are essential to its identity and expressed a commitment to maintaining them, but is nonetheless opposed to designation on the ground that the rooms are not customarily open and accessible to the public. IIE is a nonprofit organization that administers international academic and cultural exchange programs, including the Fulbright Educational Exchange Program, on behalf of a variety of sponsors such as governments, international organizations, and foundations. While it does make the rooms available for use to other, by other nonprofits that share its mission, it reserves the right to choose who may use the rooms and to deny access to entities that do not have the mission, a mission that is acceptable to IIE. IIE is not a theater or restaurant or other type of entity that seeks as a general matter to have the general public utilize its premises. The location of the rooms on the 12th floor of a commercial condominium and their use by an entity that does not directly serve the needs of or cater to the public raise questions of whether the rooms satisfy the standards of accessibility for interior landmark designation. Staff has discussed the issue with the Law Department as well. The rooms were built for IIE and continue to be owned and used by IIE to further its nonprofit purposes, together with IIE's public statements that it intends to preserve the rooms, further lessen any actual perceived threat to the rooms at this time. Site visits by the staff during the backlog initiative have confirmed that the rooms are generally in good shape and without significant alteration. Finally, there is the open issue of whether landmark designation requires interior landmarks to be forever accessible to the public, an issue that is currently under review by the New York courts, and an issue that is particularly relevant to these rooms, located as they are on the 12th floor of an office building with significant security concerns. Given the uncertainties, the lack of any perceived threat to the rooms, and without prejudice to recalendar the rooms in the future if conditions change or there's a threat to the rooms, the staff recommends that the commission remove the item from the calendar.
Thank you, Mark. Are there any questions? All right, I'll make a motion. I move, based on the record, presentation, and discussion, that the Landmarks Preservation Commission takes no action with respect to the following calendared item in the Borough of Manhattan, because item is not a priority at this time, eight-oh-nine United Nations Plaza, Edgar J. Kaufman Conference Rooms, Lecture Hall, and Elevator Lobby, LP two-one-one-one, and to remove this item and its associated tax map, block, and lot from the commission's calendar, and that this action shall be without prejudice to the commission reconsidering and recalibrating this item in the future. All in favor?
Aye.
May I pose? The Kaufman Rooms are removed from the calendar.
Next item, LP oh-five-nine-two, four-twelve East Eighty-Fifth Street, four-twelve East Eighty-Fifth Street House, Manhattan, Block fifteen-sixty-four, Lot seven-five-zero-three. Item proposed for designation, a vernacular-style house built before 1861. Jessica Baldwin, Research Staff, presenting.
Good morning. Four-twelve East Eighty-Fifth Street House is a rare wood-framed house on the Upper East Side built around 1860. The house is one of only six pre-Civil War wood-framed houses to remain on the Upper East Side, and serves as a reminder of the earliest period of construction in Upper Manhattan. At a special backlog hearing on November twelfth, 2015, ten people spoke in support of designation, including two current owners, the council member, and the borough president. The commission received 20 written submissions, and there were no speakers or written obst- obst- written against the proposed designation. Here you can see the site of the house. It is located on the south side of Eighty-Fifth Street between First and Avenue and York Avenue. Four-twelve East Eighty-Fifth Street is located in the Yorkville neighborhood, originally a rural village with working farms and estates of prominent New York families such as Peter Shimmerhorn, Jacob Astor, and Archibald Gracie. Yorkville rose up around the construction of the 1834 New York and Harlem Railroad Company Station at Eighty-Sixth and Fourth Avenue, now Park Avenue. The map to the left shows a small cluster of development forming in the Yorkville area. The combination of factors, including the railroad construction and easy ferry access to jobs- to jobs across the river at several breweries and the Steinway Piano Company, brought a rise of German, Hungarian, Czechoslovakian, and Irish immigrants to the area as the 19th century progressed. The map on the right, dated 30 years later, indicates the development and construction of masonry buildings in the area. The masonry buildings are shown in pink, while you can see there are still a few scattered wood-framed buildings in yellow. Wood-framed houses were erected in Manhattan beginning in the 17th century and were regulated as early as 1761 due to their vulnerability to fire. Fire limits, which were areas that prohibited wood-framed construction, were created and slowly began to extend northward as the city grew and the potential for large fires became a concern. Only a select few wood-framed houses have survived in Manhattan. Those include the ones pictured here at 160 East 92nd Street, a designated landmark, and Gracie Mansion, as also a designated landmark. 412 East 85th Street originally was located on land owned by Yalas Hopper, and as you can see on this map from the farm lines, it was most likely built by carpenter builder as were other framehouses in the neighborhood. The house has seen a series of changes in owners throughout the years, all while maintaining its wooden three-bay wide facade and entry location. Between 1901 and 1910, it was purchased by John Hurst, a German immigrant who arrived to America in 1892. These photos show the building through the years, acknowledging some of the changes that occurred to its exterior facade. As owners changed, so did exterior details to the building. The porch saw several iterations, all while maintaining the openings of the first-floor windows and entry. In the 1950s, Dr. Douglas Tor bought the building and began to replace details based on old photographs, including replacing the shingle siding with clapboard. In 1996, the DeVito family purchased the house, and throughout the years, they have worked to complete extensive renovations. The DeVitos worked deliberately to reconstruct the porch and its coordinating details using photos from past eras. The entire renovation was done in a thoughtful manner that has helped the home maintain its presence in the neighborhood. Today, the house stands as a reminder of Yorkville and its rural origins of the late 19th century. It remains one of six wood-framed houses left on the Upper East Side today.
Thank you, Jessica. Are there any questions? All right, Michael?
I move that the Landmarks Preservation Commission designate 412 East 85th Street House, 412 East 85th Street, in the Borough of Manhattan, as a New York City landmark because of its special character and special historical and aesthetic interest and value as part of the development, heritage, and cultural characteristics of the city, state, and nation, as set forth in the designation report for LP-0592 dated December 13th, 2016. I also move that the Borough of Manhattan tax map, Block 1564, Lot 7503, be designated as its landmark site.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 412 East 85th Street is now a designated landmark.
Next item, LP-8148, I'm sorry, 1848, 181 West 135th Street, Young Men's Christian Association YMCA Building, Harlem Branch, now Jackie Robinson YMCA Youth Center, Manhattan Block 1920, Lot 7. Item proposed for designation, a neo-Renaissance-style building designed by John Jackson and built in 1918. Teresa Noonan, research staff, presenting.
Good morning. On November 12th, 2015, Young Men's Christian Association YMCA Building, West 135th Street Branch, now the Jackie Robinson YMCA Youth Center, was heard as a part of the Landmark Preservation Commission's backlog initiative. At the hearing, four people spoke in support of designation, and no one spoke in opposition. The commission received an additional three letters of support. The building is located on 135th Street between Lenox Avenue, Malcolm X Boulevard, and 7th Avenue, Adam Clayton Powell Boulevard. Built in 1918 to 1919, the West 135th Street Young Men's Christian Association YMCA Building was one of the first African-American YMCA buildings constructed in New York City and became the center of intellectual and social life for African-Americans in the first half of the 20th century. Designed by John Jackson, a specialist in YMCA buildings, the building followed design guidelines that were developed and used to give the branches across the United States a uniform look. This branch is typical of branches built at that time. It is designed in the Italian Renaissance Revival style. It has a high base with alternating arched and rectangular openings, and is surrounded by a cornice bearing the inscription "Young Men's Christian Association," and has arched windows at the second story and arcades at the sixth story. African-American YMCA's were a direct result of the national organization's policy of racial segregation, from its beginning in the United States in 1851 until 1946. Though excluded from white YMCA's, African-Americans were encouraged to form separate branches, which became autonomous community centers. The first African-American YMCA in New York City was located in mid-Manhattan on West 53rd Street. Increasing growth of the African-American population in New York City, particularly in Harlem, was a direct result of the Great Migration and soldiers returning from World War I. The YMCA on West 53rd Street simply could not meet the increase in demand for services. This fueled the need for the new West 135th Street YMCA in Harlem. Based on the need for more modern facilities advocated by YMCA International Secretary Jesse Moreland in 1910, Julius Rosenwald, president of Sears &amp; Roebuck, pledged $25,000 to any city that could raise $75,000 for a new YMCA building with high-quality amenities for African-American men. Thousands of African-American citizens in New York City rose to the challenge and supported the YMCA building fundraise with contributions from $0.25 to $1,500. The philanthropy of Rosenwald and contributors from the public and private sectors will result in 24 African-American YMCA's across the country. With the success of the local fundraising campaign in Harlem, the Harlem YMCA opened in November 1919. By the mid-1920s, the 135th Street YMCA became the center of the Harlem Renaissance, where the African-American literati met to exchange ideas, where lectures were given, plays and music performed. Among the most noteworthy individuals associated with the 135th Street YMCA were early director of the NAACP, James Walden Johnson, Elaine Locke, the first African-American Rhodes Scholar, Paul Robeson, acclaimed actor and social activist, and authors Claude McKay, Langston Hughes, Richard Wright, excuse me, and Ralph Ellison. The YMCA was noted for its ongoing community services, salute to the star fundraisers, its educational counseling of veterans and job programs, and Black American Achievers Industry Awards dinners. In 1938, the building became the home of the Boys Department of the Harlem YMCA. In 1947, it was here that Jackie Robinson and his teammate Roy Campanella began coaching and mentoring children of Harlem at the 135th Street YMCA, an association that would last the rest of Mr. Robinson's life. The building was dedicated to him and renamed the Jackie Robinson YMCA Youth Center in The West 135th Street YMCA Jackie Robinson YMCA Youth Center is notable for its significant role it played in shaping the civic and artistic culture of Harlem. Today, the YMCA Building Harlem Branch, now Jackie Robinson Youth Center, still plays a critical role in the important civic hub of 135th Street between Lenox and 7th Avenue, along with the Young Men's Christian Association Building, the Harlem YMCA Venge Designated Landmark across the street, and the New York Public Library Schaumburg Collection for Research in Black Culture, also a New York City designated landmark. Thank you.
Thank you, Terri. It was a very enlightening presentation, and again, I think this building, it's clear that its cultural history and social history really make it a standout, both in Harlem itself, but also in the entire city. Any questions, Eric Adams? Okay, great. Fred?
I move that the Landmarks Preservation Commission designate the Young Men's Christian Association YMCA Building, West 135th Street Branch, now the Jackie Robinson YMCA Youth Center, 181 West 135th Street, Borough of Manhattan, as a New York City landmark because of its special character and special historical and aesthetic interest and value as part of the development, heritage, and cultural characteristics of the city, state, and nation, as set forth in the designation report, LP-1814 dated December 13, 2016. What did I say?
1814.
Sorry. LP-1848 dated December 13, 2016. I also move that the Borough of Manhattan tax map, Block 1920, Lot 7, be designated as its landmark site.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The West 135th Street YMCA is now a designated landmark.
Okay, the final backlog item, LP-0656, 4140 Broadway, Lowe's 175th Street Theater, Manhattan Block 2145, Lot 1. Item proposed for designation, a Hindu-Islamic-style theater designed by Thomas W. Lamb and built in 1928 to '29. Michael Karatsis, research staff, presenting.
Commissioners, the Lowe's 175th Street Theater was previously heard at the special backlog hearing of November 12th, 2015. At that hearing, eight speakers testified in support of designation, including a representative of Manhattan's Borough President. The commission also received seven written submissions in support of the proposed designation. Three representatives of the owner testified in opposition to the proposed designation, and the commission received three letters in opposition to the proposed designation, including letters from United States Representative Charles B. Rangel and Council Member Idanas Rodriguez. Commanding an entire block in Manhattan's Washington Heights neighborhood and featuring exuberant terracotta ornament, Lowe's 175th Street Theater exemplifies the American movie palace at its most monumental and spectacular. It was one of a select handful of venues billed by Lowe's as its wonder theaters. Enormous neighborhood movie palaces opened in 1929 and 1930 that were among the most lavish ever constructed in New York City. Bounded by West 175th and 176th Streets, Broadway and Wadsworth Avenue, and reaching 60 feet in height, it is a massive building unusual among Manhattan movie palaces for its construction as a freestanding structure built to be viewed and admired from all sides, in the words of movie palace historian Ben M. Hall. It was the first theater in Washington Heights designed specifically for talking pictures, and upon its opening in 1930, it was hailed by the press as mammoth and magnificent, and as one of the most costly and elaborate theaters in the Lowe's chain. The architect of the Lowe's 175th Street Theater, Thomas W. Lamb, was Lowe's most favored architect, the renowned designer of more than 300 theaters across the country and around the world. Rare in New York City for its use of historic Indian architectural elements, it was one of a small group of Indo-Persian movie theaters designed by Lamb between 1928 and 1932 that are considered to be his last great movie palaces. Its intricate and unconventional terracotta ornament, which covers the entire 175th Street facade and includes elaborate tiered pilasters, ziggurats, lancet arches, hexagonal motifs, and mukarnas, was in keeping with Lamb's goal of providing moviegoers, in his words, "with a thoroughly foreign experience in which the mind is free to frolic and becomes receptive to entertainment." Remarkably well-preserved, the building possesses its original entrance doors, box office, vertical blade sign, and imposing corner marquee, the only one of Lowe's wonder theaters to retain all of these features from the day of its opening. Over nearly four decades, the Lowe's 175th Street Theater introduced Washington Heights moviegoers to dozens of classic films and hosted appearances by movie stars including Eleanor Powell, Judy Garland, Roy Rogers, Dale Evans, and Joan Crawford. By the 1960s, the economics of operating large urban movie theaters had become increasingly difficult, and in 1969, Lowe's sold the building to the United Christian Evangelistic Association, led by Reverend Frederick Joseph Ike and Coder II, known as Reverend Ike, who renamed it the United Palace. At the United Palace, Reverend Ike's ministry reached its peak, welcoming thousands of worshippers each week and becoming one of the country's largest congregations. Reverend Ike's television program, which was the first hosted by an African-American religious leader when it debuted in 1973, often featured him on the United Palace stage. Maintained in an excellent state of preservation, the United Palace continues to function as a house of worship while hosting community performing arts groups, film screenings, and other cultural events, acting as a valuable neighborhood resource while still representing, in the words of the AIA Guide to New York City, "the apogee of movie palace glamour in those long-gone days when Hollywood ruled the world."
Thank you, Michael. What a great building. It's just amazing, and with the designation of this building, it just complements some of the other wonder theaters that we've already designated. I think we've done, Lisa, you can help me out, one we've done in the Bronx, one in Queens, and there's one more, right? Maybe not, but which one?
Midwood, isn't it?
Maybe in Brooklyn. So, and I think the fifth one, doesn't it, oh, two, okay. But what's interesting about the other two is that their styles are completely different, and this is really a unique building in its Indo-Persian style. It also has amazing presence if you go there because it occupies the block and can be viewed from all sides, so it's just fascinating.
We just don't have many Indo-Persian-style buildings.
We do not. So, it's just a great building.
Thank you.
Are there any questions? Okay, so we can move to designate. Wellington, do you want to read that?
By the way, there's one in China, also by Thomas Lamb. Not quite, it's a style. Motion to designate Lowe's 175th Street Theater, now United Palace. I move that Landmark Preservation Commission designate the Lowe's 175th Street Theater, now United Palace, 4140 Broadway, Borough of Manhattan, as a New York City landmark because of its special character and special historic and aesthetic interest and value as part of the development, heritage, and cultural characteristics of the city, state, and nation. As set forth in the designation report for LPC-0656 dated December 13, 2016, I also move that Borough of Manhattan tax map, Block 2145, Lot 1, be designated as its landmark site.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Lowe's 175th Street Theater is now a designated landmark. I just want to say a few things. This has really been a mammoth undertaking, to use the word that Michael actually used, but I believe is really well worth it, and we can change the course of the commission's practice to be better, more accountable, and timely, and I think the process has been efficient and transparent and also incredibly rigorous. It was almost like starting from scratch, going back to all these buildings and establishing its significance and the additional research that brought it here today. And as we conclude today, we have now 10 new landmarks, along with 17 others which were designated over the past year, and were on the calendar for decades and never thought they'd see the light of the day, so they've come before us. I'm very pleased that the overall 27 properties that we've designated represent all five boroughs. They're an incredibly diverse group of buildings. They have various, from various eras, typologies, architects, from early modest houses in Staten Island and the Bronx and in Manhattan. You have incredibly elaborate architectural masterpieces as well, as well as various buildings that represent cultural and social history of New York, and also several incredibly great religious properties. This initiative has been an amazing collaboration with a diverse group of stakeholders who've brought us here today. brought us here today. I, first of all, want to thank all my commissioners. As volunteers, you've shown so much dedication to preservation in New York City. I think people forget how much time the commission has spent on this. Not only did we have four or five special hearings, but also many of the commissioners went and visited the sites, they read tons and tons of paper and documents, and really engaged in this process wholeheartedly, so you should be commended for your service to New York City and to preservation overall in the city. I'd like to also thank the Manhattan Borough President, Gail Brewer. She's been a steadfast advocate for preservation and the preservation community overall for assisting our agency in developing a plan to address the backlog. We're also very grateful to the participation of all council members, I've spent many hours with them, as well as property owners and institutions, many who have supported their designations, and almost all of them who care for their buildings. I'd also like to express my utmost appreciation to our backlog team, which in some ways has touched, I think, every person in our agency. Lisa Ker Savage, our top-notch Director of Strategic Planning and Special Projects, led this effort, our entire research team, and I cannot say it's without any exaggeration that everyone in the research department was engaged in this very elaborate effort. I also want to thank Damaris Olivo, our Director of Communications, and Lauren George, our Director of Intergovernment and Community Relations. Several of our administrative staff have chipped in and worked with us, including Lorraine and Jeanette. And finally, I want to thank our Executive Director, Sarah Carroll, and our General Counsel, Mark Silbermann. And I can say unequivocally, it's with their direction and guidance that we brought this effort to fruition today. Thank you all. I'd probably congratulate it. Thank you. And with that, we will move on to our preservation agenda.
Mary, just one sec.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Are these work? Okay. Commissioners, good morning. This is the first application, the first two applications on the Preservation Department agenda. I'll read them both under the record. The first item is docket number 19, 1941, 83 Westminster Road, Prospect Park South Historic District, a colonial revival-style house designed by George E. Showers and built in 1908. The application is to install a shared driveway and curb cut. And the second proposal is docket number 19, 1942. This is 85 Westminster Road, Prospect Park South Historic District, a colonial revival-style house designed by George E. Showers and built in 1907-08. The application is to install a concrete driveway and curb cut.
Good morning, Commissioners, Mary Service, Preservation Staff. 83 and 85 Westminster Road are two freestanding houses located on the east side of Westminster Road between Church Avenue and Albemarle Road in the Prospect Park South Historic District. This application is to install a shared concrete driveway and curb cut between the two houses. The proposed driveway will consist of two concrete strips with a grassy median in between. This is a map of the Prospect Park South Historic District. The arrow points to the approximate location of the two houses. This is a Google Street View of the two houses, and the driveway will be installed right in between them. These images are some existing conditions of the rear elevations of the two houses. 83 is on your left, I'm sorry, on your right, and 85 is on your left. These are some existing conditions of the rear yards. The applicants provided a mock-up of the driveway plan. I bolded the string in red to make it easier for viewing on the screen, so here is the mock-up. These are more mock-up images, again, bolded in red. So this slide shows the dimensions of the, or these are the existing and proposed drawings. As I said earlier, the proposed driveway will consist of two concrete strips with a grassy median in between. And here are the dimensions of the proposed driveway, as well as the rear parking areas for the cars. And lastly, these are similar driveways on the block and in the district, so there is precedence for this sort of driveway. And the applicants are here to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? Any questions to the applicant? Okay. Are there any speakers on this item? No speakers, and the community board has waived its review of this application. So if you have no questions, we can close the hearing. All right, comments? I think, yes, comments? I would just urge the applicants to review this with the Buildings Department to make sure that it's code compliant to do it, if you haven't done it already, because there's, I think, at least a minimum width that is required for parking, so if you could do that, that'd be helpful. But I think that the treatment of putting a median in the center with grass helps to soften what otherwise be a roadway, and it seems that there is some precedent to it in the neighborhood, and I think by the time you get to the rear of it, it's pretty far removed from the public thoroughfare. So I think it's, yes.
Just one suggestion. It looks like the downspout that now heads out toward the driveway will have to be relocated or adjusted somehow. What I would suggest, rather than knocking the end of it off with the car every time you go by, don't drop it straight down, because that's going to send water into your basement. Take it around the side of the house.
Okay.
Get a smaller car.
Yeah.
We're going to get a little bit of the top lot.
All right, so why do we move to? Yes, I think, we'll go to Janie?
In the matter of docket 19-1941, 83 Westminster Road, Prospect Park South Historic District, the application is to install a shared driveway and curb cut. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Prospect Park South Historic District. I further note that the driveway is to be shared with 85 Westminster Road. I recommend approval finding that the installation of a shared curb cut and shared driveway will not eliminate any significant fabric from the building or site, that the proposed location of the driveway running between houses and extending to the rear of the lot is consistent with other driveways found elsewhere in this historic district, that the design of the driveway featuring two concrete strips with a grassy median, a concrete parking area at the rear of the lot, and concrete curb cut will be in keeping with the historic driveways found elsewhere in this district, and that the use of two narrow concrete paving strips instead of full-coverage blacktop will allow for the retention of grass in the side yard, facilitating drainage and reinforcing the presence of green space in this suburban-style district.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Application's approved.
In the matter of docket 18-533, wait a minute, sorry. In the matter of docket 19-1942, 85 Westminster Road, Prospect Park South Historic District, the application is to install a concrete driveway and curb cut. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Prospect Park South Historic District. I further note that the driveway is to be shared with Number 83 Westminster Road. I recommend approval finding that the installation of a shared curb cut and shared driveway will not eliminate any significant fabric from the building or site, that the proposed location of the driveway running between houses and extending to the rear of the lot is consistent with other driveways found elsewhere in this historic district, that the design of the driveway featuring two concrete strips with a grassy median, a concrete parking area at the rear of the lot, and concrete curb cut will be in keeping with historic driveways found elsewhere in this district, and that the use of two narrow concrete paving strips instead of full-coverage blacktop will allow for the retention of grass in the side yard, facilitating drainage and reinforcing the presence of green space in this suburban-style district.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Application's approved.
Okay, Commissioners, the next. The third item on the agenda is an application for certificate of appropriateness in the Borough of Brooklyn, docket number 185333. This is 1324 Bergen Street, located within the Crown Heights North, 3 Historic District. It's a neo-Grec-style rowhouse designed by Amzie Hill and built circa 1876. The application is to construct a rear yard addition.
Catherine Redd, Preservation Department staff. The proposal is for work at the rear facade of 1324 Bergen Street, directly opposite Revere Place and east of Kingston. The architect, Alexander Hapovsky, is here to describe the proposal.
Happy holidays, everybody. We are proposing a three-story horizontal enlargement into the existing rear yard with renovation work in the facade, that we are currently working with the landmark staff to figure out all the details. We're locating the Crown Heights North 3 Historic District, and our block is actually, our block on the right-hand side, the historic district cuts in half, the final four lots. You can see the boundary line of the designated district there. These lots to the right-hand side are no longer in our designated district, and this map represents the different types of rowhouses located on our street and on St. Mark's Street, and the current enlargements or extensions that have been built there in the past and currently, some of them, there's one in the mother construction currently. Did I go too far? See the technical difficulties? What we have done to illustrate our points as to the current rear yard enlargements in the existing block is to show that most of the block encroaches beyond the enlargement line that we are suggesting. In fact, 88.2% of the block, which has 15 extensions on it, and what we are asking for, we believe, is a reasonable enlargement into the rear yard. If you look at two-story extensions, 76.5% of the block has it, and three-story and up, 64. And what we're proposing is a three-story and up enlargement. This breaks down the different types of contextual landmark rowhouses in our area, on our block, and to show, we're in the blue, and we have several enlargements encroaching into the required rear yard. We're flanked on the left-hand side at the two-story with the basement, and we're, our third story is almost aligned with the roof line of that to the left, and to the right, that building, the three-story is actually higher, which you will see in the maps upcoming. This further illustrates in a percentage how we are, how our rear yard remains contextual throughout for the proposed enlargement. And we're located right there. You can see by the black outline of our block next to the pin. And here is our enlargement juxtaposed relative to the block in the back. That, the building to the right is under construction currently. You can see that in the pictures coming up. And the building to the left, we're almost aligned with that roof line, so it appears that we are asking for a somewhat of a reasonable enlargement. It's, we're not encroaching too much into the rear yard, even though FAR does permit This is the front facade. The front facade, we are currently working on it. We are resolving all the details, the restoration work, looking for the staff, but it's still in progress. All these elements in the front facade, we have been going back and forth with the staff, addressing it.
But it's all staff-level? It's a staff-level work on the front?
Continued details of the restoration work that we intend to fix on the front facade. And this is our rear facade. Our rear facade currently is brick. We're flanked with stuff to the left, and to the right is also brick, and this is the sample of the typical rowhouses on our side. Windows, gutters have all been installed there. Here you can see on the right-hand side of the picture, on the lower right, you can see the extension, the two-story extension that is under construction, and this is what we intend to do. We're looking for a soul sort of approach towards the architectural elements of it, a lot of glass and steel. We feel that's also, it's not going to impact the rear facade, it's not visible from the street, neighbors don't see it except for the few buildings directly behind us. These are some of the construction elements that we intend to use. And our extension is about 14 feet 8 inches, complies with New York City zoning. The Department of Buildings has reviewed this. All objections have been resolved, with the exception of pending landmark approval. We have, New York City is a, it requires 30-foot rear yard. We are beyond limitations. Actually, I'm sorry, I apologize. What we're currently is 44/8, and we are in the exactly 30-foot rear yard. No cellar extension, step footing design. You hear some of the pictures on St. Marks around the street. Our building is directly on the upper side, if you take a little project location, it's behind that building. It's not visible from St. Marks. And that's our existing facade. That's the building to the right, which is currently under construction, and the current rowhouses. Some of the metrics, and our plot plan to illustrate the floor plans.
Okay. Are there? Yes.
This is not a change of this application, this is an alteration type, so we're not changing the certificate of appropriateness.
Okay. Are there any questions? Any questions? All right, we have one speaker, Kelly Carroll.
Kelly Carroll, Historic Districts Council. Of this row of five modest two-story rowhouses, this is the first proposal to build out the rear in full height and width. Missing from this application were examples of other rear yard additions of this scale, design, or materials within the district. In a district characterized by earthy materials of brick, brownstone, and limestone, it would have been helpful to make a better case for why this design is appropriate. On its face, the glass and steel set within a black frame clashes with its context. Thank you.
Are there any more speakers on the site? Community Board, three recommends approval of the primary for Community Board three recommends approval of the primary facade renovation, which is at staff level, and they recommend denial of the three-story extension because it breaks the continuity of the rear facades. And we also received from Crown Heights North Association a letter in opposition to the rear yard extension. Do we have any other questions for the applicant? Okay, we can, well, just one comment about the, the glass and, and steel. Do you want to comment on the?
Even though that is absolutely the desired effect that our client requests, she is flexible to potentially changing the materials if the board needs it necessary. Other than that, that is our absolute, that is what she desires to do.
Right. I guess it was more so a question of whether there's an argument to be made, I mean, about other rear yard additions in the neighborhood and the sort of array of materials that they've used?
Brick, stucco was installed that I permit, but brick is the, is the dominant material there. If we could change design to maybe incorporate some brick aspects and maybe if permitting maybe some steel or glass, she's open to that, I think.
Right. It was more so to sort of hear your narrative about the design that you have right now. Yes, Diana?
Yeah, she was asking, in the neighborhood, in this district, are there other examples you can think of that might be somewhat similar in terms of a more modern treatment? That's what she was asking.
For the intended design, I haven't seen anything like it.
Okay, thank you.
All right. If there are no other questions, we can close the hearing. Comments? Yes, Michael?
I think that this is a clearly identifiable row of houses. I, I can't think of too many examples where the commission has permitted the complete obscuring of the rear facade in that case. I think they should just lop off the top floor so that the cornice and third floor, third floor windows can be retained. I think that the material is not unacceptable. It's a little, it is a little aggressive, but we try to be as flexible as possible on the backs. I think that if the applicant is willing to explore integrating the use, integrating the masonry, I think it would help, but they could do that with staff.
All right. The Commissioners?
I was thinking, you know, obviously, I think, I can think of one example where we actually did approve, you know, but, you know, I think the context is what's important. And normally, we do preserve that upper floor, though with the upper floor, they could create a door and have a, you know, some kind of a deck situation at least a little bit, you know, so they could get some additional, you know, upper, upper access, so to speak. And, you know, in general, I don't, I think the material is, we permit a lot of variation, so I don't have a problem with that. So my comments are similar to Michael's, I guess.
Other comments? Okay, so the Commissioners feel that we can ask them to set back the, the top floor. And in fact, if they go, set back to, to what it is currently, then in fact, you have, you have some masonry in the structure and you'll have the punched openings, but they could create a door, allow them to use the terrace. And in terms of the material, I think we've allowed for a lot of flexibility, and it'll be two stories. It really is going to be only viewed from across the, the homes across in the donut and not from others to either side of it, so. Fine, we can move ahead with that? Okay, John?
In the matter of docket number eighteen dash five three 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 thirteen twenty-four Bergen Street in the Crown Heights North Three Historic District, the application is to construct a rear yard addition. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Crown Heights North Three Historic District. I recommend approval with a modification, finding that the proposed rear addition will not be visible from a public thoroughfare, that the proposed rear addition will not project further into the rear yard than other rear additions in this row, and therefore the addition will not significantly diminish the central green space, that the glass, metal, and stucco materials of the proposed addition, as well as their neutral finish palette, are in keeping with the wide variety of materials and designs often used on rear additions, and that therefore these features of the proposed rear addition will maintain the building's historic row house character and the special architectural and historic character of the building, the row, and the Crown Heights North Three Historic District. However, I find that the house is a part of a continuous row, and the three-story height of the proposed rear addition will exceed the one-story heights of rear additions at the surrounding row houses in this row and in this block, eliminate the harmonious visual relationship among the buildings in this row, and interrupt the continuity of their historic rear cornice lines, and therefore the addition will overwhelm the building and row. Therefore, I recommend that the, that the height of the proposed rear addition be reduced, the top floor remain intact, and the historic rear cornice line be restored.
All in favor? Any opposed? Application's approved.
Commissioners, the next item on the agenda is an application for a certificate of appropriateness. Borough of Manhattan, docket number nineteen zero one one two. This is seven ninety-nine Fort Washington Avenue. The Cloisters Museum, an individual landmark. Museum complex composed of portions of medieval buildings and modern structures designed by Charles Collins and constructed between nineteen thirty-four and thirty-eight. The application is to install banners.
Good morning, Commissioners, and the Waterloo Preservation Staff. The item before you today is for seven ninety-nine Fort Washington Avenue, the Cloisters. The building is located at the northern section of Fort Triumph Park. The proposal is to replace two temporary banners with signage, with permanent banners adjacent to this entrance. The applicant is here to further explain the proposal and answer your questions. Thank you.
Good morning, and thank you very much for the opportunity to present, and happy holidays to all of you. My name is Griffith Mann. I'm the curator in charge of the Metropolitan Museum of Arts Medieval Department and the Cloisters. As you just heard, the Cloisters is a branch museum of the Metropolitan Museum of Art devoted to the art and architecture of the Middle Ages. It was opened in this location in nineteen thirty-eight, and the slide that you're looking at represents the main entrance of the museum. There is a secondary entrance that's just up the driveway, off the view, just up here. We are focused, for the purposes of this presentation, on the main entrance, which directly addresses the, the main access to the museum by the bus, also the primary parking areas, as well as where people would come up from Dyckman Street, or as they walk through the park from the subway, the A train. This is really the main entrance of the museum. Just in, in an aerial view, the Metropolitan Museum of Art property is about four acres inside this ring road, and the Cloisters itself is located more broadly in Fort Triumph Park on the northern end of the tip of Manhattan. The focus of the work that I'll be addressing is what we call the poster and gate entrance, which is highlighted there for you in red. The Cloisters, thanks to the Landmarks Commission, received permission to put two temporary banners that would mark the main entrance of the museum. So this is a view of what those banners look like. We're here today to propose taking these temporary banners and marking them, or rather anchoring them as permanent features of the building, more or less as you see here. So here are the designs that we've worked with engineers on for the permanent banners. They would be affixed to the vertical elements of the ramparts and anchored over the top here, at the very top of the, the extent of the ramparts themselves. The temporary banners that we use now are anchored with steel, basically elevator weights down here that we've boxed up, and then they're anchored at the top by steel weights that go over the top of the ramparts. So the proposal is to drill into ideally the mortar joints to have these banners be affixed permanently to the building. Now, you might ask, is this something that's in keeping with a building that's supposed to look like a medieval structure and be evocative of buildings from the Middle Ages? Temporary banners and, and signage were used in the Middle Ages to indicate important structures that were sometimes temporary and sometimes permanent on important civic and festival occasions. So here, just a few shots from medieval manuscripts from the later Middle Ages showing how banners like this would have been used in these kinds of contexts. So I'm going to go back, for the purposes of this presentation, to the designs for the, for the permanent banners, and just to ask if there are any questions that people have about this proposed change.
Ideally into the mortar joints or absolutely into the mortar joints?
I can ask my colleague, Mike Dominic.
I'm Mike Dominic. I'm the senior infrastructure manager at the Metropolitan Museum of Art. We are not definitely going to the mortar joints. Mortar joints are always our first choice, but if our structural engineer determines that we can't get an appropriate amount of bite by going into the mortar joints, we will have to go into the schist. Thank you.
Are there other? Are there other questions? Questions? Okay, thank you. Any speakers on the side? No speakers? And we didn't receive anything from the community board as well. All right. Actually, I just have one question. Do you know how many sort of anchors that you'll need to put in to affix the banner?
We do.
Is it just at the bottom, at the top? Yeah?
No, there will actually be six anchors in total for each banner. There will be four holding the cables for which the banner will slide up and down, and there will be two more up in the upper cornice, which will actually keep the banner in its position up top as it doesn't sag down.
So four is along the wall and two on top, is that right?
Correct.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, so we can close the hearing. All right, comments? Yes.
I've dragged my Columbia and UMass classes up there four times in the last semester, and I was surprised at how plain those banners are. You could work with staff to make them actually a little more medieval looking, but that's... The other, with regard to the, to the comments about the schist, you know, that Nysick rock is so variegated that if they had to drill into it, it would be very easily patched and, and making it a patch that would be invisible. That really doesn't concern me at all.
Okay, good. That's good to know. Yes, I know you're concerned about that. Yes, Diana?
Yeah, I just think that it's, it's fine, and it's needed, really. You know, it's quite appropriate. You know, it's, it's, I've been up there many times, you know, it's not, it's not, they need a little bit of ability to help guide the public who wants to visit, so.
Absolutely. I mean, it's, it's a great institution, and I think their signage, even though they look like, is just, it actually works very well with, with the wall. Any other comments? Yes?
I think it's, it's a riot that, that we have. I think, I think that where the commission needs more medieval material as, as, as an example of why we should justify additions to a nineteen thirty-eight building. I think it's, I think it's great.
John is, Adi? Yes.
In the matter of seven ninety-nine Fort Washington Avenue, the Cloisters Museum, individual landmark, a museum complex composed of portions of medieval buildings and modern structures designed by Charles Collins and constructed between nineteen thirty-four and nineteen thirty-eight, the application is to install banners. I recommend approval, finding that the banners will be installed at the masonry mortar joints obscuring only a limited portion of the building's stonework and will not conceal any significant architectural features of the complex or surrounding landscape. That the placement, size, and material of the banners will be consistent with aspects of signage historically found at museum complexes built in the early twentieth century and with historic banner installations which were sometimes found at medieval buildings. That the banners will be within close proximity to the entrance, which will facilitate wayfinding and will be well scaled to the facade and entrance. That with the exception of two display boxes, the banners will not be seen with the other signage at the complex and will not therefore overwhelm the complex, and that the work will be easily reversible and will not diminish the special architectural and historic character of this individual landmark.
All in favor? Any opposed? Application's approved.
Commissioners, the next item on the agenda is an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, docket number nineteen four one three seven. This is one oh two West one eighteen Street located within the Mount Morris Park Historic District Extension. This is a neo-grec style row house designed by William Gogolts and built circa eighteen ninety-two. The application is to construct rear yard and rooftop additions.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Abby Harbitt, Preservation Staff. This application is for work at the rear and roof of the building at one oh two West one eighteen Street located on the southern side of West one eighteen Street between Lenox Avenue and Anna Lake Powell Boulevard in the Mount Morris Park Historic District Extension. So this application is to construct a full-height rear yard L addition with balconies integrated into the notch and a rooftop addition set back from the front and rear facades. Now, the rear addition will not, anything at the rear will not be visible, but the rooftop addition will be visible from one eighteen Street, across the street, and through this alleyway between this building and the adjacent building. The applicant is here to discuss this in detail.
My name's David E. Gross, AIA. I'm the architect for the project and the owner of the firm. We're, we're doing two things that affect the landmarks. We're doing a penthouse on the roof and an addition in the rear. The penthouse on the roof, as you can see from the, your packet, we did a mock-up. Okay. If you can see the penthouse on the diagram? Show them, show the penthouse, the photos from the street. The penthouse is unsee, unseeable from the street. It's ascribed by code. We have a mock-up that showed, those are the photographs with the mock-up. You can't, you can't see them. Those are the photos with the mock-up. You can't see it from the street, and then show the photo of the actual mock-up on the roof. Right. Basically, you can see it. It's made out of a metal, which is clearly distinct from the building itself. Then the other issue that is of consideration is the rear height, the rear extension on the back. Our project is at the end of the row, so whatever we do does affect the rest of the row. It's surrounded by buildings that are taller than ours. To the, to the, the building, the building adjacent on the right is taller than ours. Several of the buildings across the alleyway on one hundred and seventeen Street, while they're not in the district, are taller than ours. You can see that there are several, in our particular row, there aren't any additions, but adjacent to our row and down the street on one hundred and eighteen Street, there are several L-shaped additions that are original to the era. The, go forward. One more. Yeah, there. Our, that corbling on the top of our building is deteriorated and needs to be repaired or replaced because it's sort of crumbling at this point, and part of the scope of our work will be to recreate that and improve that. I wish there was more to say.
Okay. All right. Any, are there any questions? Yes, Michael?
There's an engineer's report that indicates that that has to be reconstructed.
There isn't.
Okay, we have one speaker?
Just for my own visual inspection, as a person who have thirty years of construction experience, it needs to be.
Okay. Kelly Carroll?
Kelly Carroll, Historic Districts Council. It is clear that this building's conversion to a five-family apartment building is driving the exterior design on the rear. While the bulk is not an issue, the window openings and private balconies appear suburban and not like something that is found in the Mount Morris Park Historic District. What's more, the examples provided as precedent for this type of design are not located within the district or were constructed prior to designation. Other examples provided of rears of rows display historic punched openings with original L extensions, which communicate a confusing message as the proposed design deviates entirely from what is shown. The rooftop bulkhead should also be smaller and slanted to provide rooftop access from the duplex apartment. There is much unnecessary space proposed in this plan, and it should be reduced to lessen the impact in this district. This is a new district with only a handful of applications submitted to the commission thus far, so it is paramount that the LPC review applications with scrutiny so that approved alterations move this district in a positive direction. Thank you.
Are there any more speakers on this item? The speakers, community, board recommends their... Let me see. So their committee says that they can support this application only if the applicant selects a cladding type that resembles the color and texture of the existing house facade, and they do not support the utilization of the proposed metallic cladding. All right, do we have other questions for the applicant? Okay, we can close the hearing. Any comments? Yes.
I sort of also agree with the testimony that it's... The design is very... I don't know. We don't usually get too involved with the rear design, that it looks very apartment-housy, you know?
Can you turn to LPC 11, please?
Yeah.
Which is the only image that we have of the design, right?
Yeah, correct.
Oh, we've got... Actually, the thing is...
Well, maybe there's some...
That's it, that's it. Thank you.
So the... I mean, the metallic cladding's at the... On the top floor, right?
Correct.
Because the rest is masonry.
Masonry, right.
Yeah.
Right, so I think...
That's fine.
The metallic cladding's up here, so that's where you'll see it, if you'll remember back through that notch.
I don't really...
You're gonna see it here through this... Through this brick in the alleyway. You'll start to see the metallic.
So let's see, the top floor would look like this.
I don't have an issue with that.
Maybe it's the balconets.
That's where you'll see the metallic.
It's very per se.
Okay.
Pretty open material.
Okay, we've closed the hearing, but we've heard your comments. Are there any other thoughts about this? Yes?
So it is being turned into a multi...
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so. Mm-hmm.
It is, yes, it's being redeveloped.
Right.
Yeah.
And I...
Abby, can you just clarify that? It's being converted to a multifamily?
I think it already is.
It's a multifamily?
Okay.
Yeah, there will be more apartments.
Okay.
Okay, they're going to increase the number of apartments. Okay, so it's a multifamily right now, but they'll be increasing the number of apartments. I don't... All right, yes, Adi, do you want to...
No. I... At first I would have thought that this was fine, but I think I agree with Michael Devonshire that the... That the top floor should remain where it is in the plane that it exists right now. And I suppose the other... I mean, I don't like that kind of strange rear facade that has this kind of piece of something and then a completely different and not singular, it seems, approach. So, I don't know. But I think in order to be consistent, I suppose we should preserve the top floor.
Should we go ahead with that? But I would agree with you. I've always found that an odd sort of...
It's difficult, yeah.
Ensemble, really, because you have the rear yard, which is very modern, often. This case is actually very... It's much more contextual, but we've seen that. Then you have the top floor, which is historic, and then you have the rooftop addition, which is something else. And sometimes it works well, sometimes it doesn't. Sometimes the context of the block may not require that, and I think we've done that in rare insistence as well. But in this particular case, I think setting back would probably...
Do we have... We have a photo of the rest of the row right in the back?
I'm sorry?
Just to look at the row, the current row from the back? I think we have...
Is it a photograph of the rear facades?
So here's some here.
Mm-hmm.
And then there was, I believe, there's another...
It's like about five in a row, it looks like.
We can see the area here.
Yeah, okay. There it is, that's good.
So this, that's here, and there's the rear.
Yeah, that's good. It's pretty consistent right now.
Isn't it next to a building that's...
Taller.
What is that?
Yeah.
It has a depth to it.
Yeah, it's next to a taller building on the other side.
Okay. All right, so shall we recommend then that it be modified? Okay, all right, that's good. Diana?
Okay. So the only... What we're going to do is just recommend they take off the top. Just set back the top one, okay? Okay. In the matter of its certificate of appropriateness, Borough of Manhattan, 102 West 111th Street, Mount Morris Park Historic District Extension. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Mount Morris Park Historic District Extension. I recommend approval with modifications, finding that the rooftop addition will be set back from the front and rear facades, and in terms of height, massing, materials, and finish, it will be consistent with other rooftop additions on this block. That when viewed from public thoroughfares, the rooftop addition will be minimally visible from limited oblique views within the context of secondary facades. That other buildings of this type in the block feature comparable rear yard additions or enlargements in terms of their numbers of floors and projection into the rear yard. That the house is situated adjacent to a large apartment building at the end of the row. Therefore, the proposed rear yard addition will not detract from adjoining properties or disrupt a unified row or diminish the central green space. The combination of the L-shaped rear addition and the balconies within the resulting notch will maintain a simple block form in keeping with the massing of modern additions typically found at buildings within this historic district. That the rear addition will feature a high solid-to-void ratio, typical of secondary facades of buildings within this historic district, and punch masonry openings in keeping with the residential character and scale of the building in row. And that none of the work at the rear will be visible from any public thoroughfare. However, I find that the full height addition will obscure significant aspects of the building's original massing and diminish significant unifying characteristics of this row, including the corbelled brickwork and pattern of punched openings. Therefore, I find that the rear yard addition should be lowered and set back by one... Lowered by one floor and the top floor of the rear facade be maintained.
All in favor? Any opposed? Application's approved, and we will break for lunch and start our next session at 12:45.
Okay, Commissioners, this is item number six on the agenda. It's an application for a certificate of appropriateness, Borough of Manhattan, docket number 194675. This is 144 West 14th Street. The 144 West 14th Street building, an individual landmark. This is a Renaissance Revival-style loft building signed by Brunner and Tryon and built in 1895 and '96. The application is to install new storefront and fill new signage and flag poles.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Timothy Shaw, Preservation Staff. 144 West 14th Street is located on the south side of West 14th. This is upside down, between Sixth and Seventh Avenues. The application is for the installation of new storefront infill at the ground floor, for the installation of signage above the main entrance, and the installation of two new poles at the base of existing flags to create stretch banners. Please note that the top flag poles are present at the time of designation. Carrie Bobo from Seldorgh Architects will present a proposal in detail.
I think he gave you guys a little bit of information that I won't duplicate here. The storefront in this building has an interesting... Has a little bit of an interesting history. It was built in 1896, and then in 1912, 14th Street was widened. The storefront originally extended in front of the storefront by about 24 inches. And at that time, the storefront was pushed back to allow for the widening of the sidewalk. Then in the... In the '70s, the 1912 storefront was completely removed. It was replaced by a folding aluminum storefront that actually allowed the first floor to function as an open market. And then in the late '90s, Pratt did a full renovation of the building, and at that time, they put in a storefront that you can see in the... That you can see in these current photos. It's a combination of painted steel. It's actually built of dimensional lumber on the inside with wood trim pieces on the front. So we studied carefully, particularly the 1940s tax photo. And one thing that we felt was stronger in the 1940s tax photo than in the current storefront configuration is the sort of connection of the first floor and second floor. So that was something we looked to contend... To sort of come back to a little bit in our current design. One piece of emphasis is this cornice that extends significantly beyond the face of the building. We think it approximately aligns to the original location of the 1895 storefront. But are unsure if it's been... If it's remained in that location until today. Our proposal shows a new wood storefront, going back to the original materiality of the storefront. And it draws primarily on the language of the second-floor windows in order to create a first floor that feels in keeping with the historic pieces of the building. The main building entry is here, and then there are secondary entrances to adjacent shop fronts within those architectural spaces. We are proposing some signage at the new second-floor cornice level, as well as a designating sign of Pratt in front of the main entry doors. This is just showing the extent of demolition. An enlargement of our proposed storefronts. This is relative to the banners.
So can you just tell me? You're removing the cornice that's between the first and the second floor?
We are... When we originally investigated the building, we felt pretty strongly that that piece was not historic.
Okay.
We've since done a lot of further analysis, and it seems unclear if it's a historic piece that's been relocated, a historic piece that was there from 1896, or if it is indeed something that was added later. We can't... You can see in this drawing that it protrudes quite a bit from the face of the storefront, and you can see that the structure that's supporting it is obviously... Must have been added in the '90s, just based on its condition and also the type of lumber that's used.
That's the interior of that same thing, those steel angles on the right?
That's exactly right. That's exactly right. That's a photo from the inside.
That's not it.
Right. So we're... I mean, we're at best a little bit confused by it. We've done... We've been there three or four times, just trying to figure out if it is indeed historic. I think when we looked at the tax photo... And it's just a little too difficult to see, but when we looked at the tax photo here, the 1940s tax photo, we didn't feel that that cornice was interrupting the vertical line of the... Of the column visually. And so we didn't feel that in 1940, this cornice extended the way that it does today. It's actually pretty awkward right now. I think...
What happened?
Seems like it just stops.
So that's such a good question. So it does return, but the returns are not the same construction as the face of the... Of the cornice. They are...
Right, it doesn't...
It's a lighter return. It's a lighter return. And the return is a much lighter gauge pressed metal than the front.
You're thinking that it was baked out and they moved it up?
Well, I think in 1912, it was certainly in this... In a location similar to this. So what I don't know is if in 1990, they decided that they should in some way mimic that 1895 commission.
Okay.
It's all... It's all a little bit unclear. I think what the main point to note is that it's certainly disconnected from any historic context. It's sort of a piece that's floating out there that doesn't make sense where it is today and doesn't have a connection or relationship to building history. It has a very strange, very flat plywood socket under it.
And does yours, I couldn't find, have a profile that...
It has... It has a stepped profile.
It does, oh, there it goes.
But it doesn't have... Sorry, let's look at it here. It has a stepped profile, but it doesn't have the level of detail that the original cornice had. It doesn't have the dentures or...
Also, can you tell... I can't really tell from the original photo, what was... Whether that was original, an original cornice or not? What color was it?
So that's a good question, too. We think that it was sort of a mid... A mid-tone, but we did go to the building and look at the layers of paint and see if we just ourselves could determine the history of the paint on the building. We were hoping that actually when they opened up the cornice, that we would see some bits of paint around it. We didn't have good luck with that. We're proposing a gray, which I think looks a bit brown in these, so forgive us that, but we're thinking of a gray, and we're thinking maybe a little bit lighter than the tone represented here. So I think we're continuing to study the right color for the building. We definitely want to look at that in relationship to the existing limestone.
Okay, are there other questions? Yes?
Is this space to be used for retail, not associated with Pratt?
That's not confirmed.
So this may or may not be independent of Pratt? So is... Are we to take the text that's shown on your proposed facade as signage? Or is it... I mean, is it like advertising for a company? Or is it...
So... Storefronts?
You know? Well, I'm just trying to clarify that.
Right. So the idea with the text that's shown here is that it would not be as extensive as it is shown, that it would be something that relates to the storefront itself. It would be, say, cut metal letters that have a relationship to that facade and are specific to either the retail application that would go into this storefront or to Pratt's use of the space.
But what about above the entry?
Well, that's a sign they're proposing.
So this door is the main entry for Pratt's presence of the building today, and it will main... And it will remain Pratt's main entry point for the building. And now, when you're... A lot of people don't know that Pratt is here in this... And now, when you're, a lot of people don't know that Pratt is here in this building. Now, when you're walking down the sidewalk, there isn't very much presence for Pratt here. And this, while this, this door surround does seem like it would signify entrance, it also serves to push the entry doors back from the street face. And so even if they have signage on those doors, they're not very visible at a pedestrian level. So the idea was to have, you know, more of a signifying sign for sort of an institutional, an institutional sign for the building.
And you're also thinking that on the far left, you need to have additional signage for your tenant above the train and the transom and, and on the signboard?
There was the idea that this may be a gallery space, and that they would use the galleries, that they would have their gallery signage here rather than on this fascia. I think because the program isn't decided, we've shown both. I don't think that we personally would like to see signage in both of those locations. I think it should be one or the other. I just wasn't sure how to handle that with the program not yet being confirmed.
Yeah, so just to clarify, so there's the entranceway for Pratt, there's something here on the left. How many different uses are there?
So I can speak to what was there previously. So on the left, you can see in this photo, there was Artie's, which was the hardware store here. And then there was the Pratt entryway, which is quite narrow and enters Siberian Narrow Vestibule. And then there's H&R Block in this space. And then Pratt really has everything from the second, you know, from this line up. I think that there is certainly the opportunity that this storefront, this storefront, and this storefront could be three separate uses. There's also the possibility that Pratt could, could take over all of the storefronts and it really be a fully Pratt building.
Okay. Are there other questions?
All right. Kelly Carroll.
Kelly Carroll, Historic District Council. This stretch of 14th Street is a visual respite from the clutter of buildings and signage along this thoroughfare. The soon-to-be landmarked Salvation Army Territorial Headquarters Building next door and 144 West 14th provides a juxtaposition of a strong art deco composition with the equally imposing classical mass. Collectively, these two buildings communicate a strong architectural presence along the streetscape. To further improve this experience, HDC would like to see a stronger designed ground floor configuration. The only historic photo furnished was the 1940 photo, which is very small. That means that the building was already half a century old at the time when this photo was taken, and more research should be conducted to design a ground floor on par with an individual landmark. And more research would also clear up things as to whether the cornice is original or not. And as this is 14th Street, very close to Seventh Avenue, there should be quite a number of photographs. Thank you.
Are there any more speakers on this item? All right. Community Board Two recommends denial of the infill alterations unless the transom single pane windows and window frames are painted to match existing frames on the upper floors, and the denial of the sign over the entryway. Can you just respond? Is the, what are the color differences? They wanted you to match? Yeah, go ahead.
There were a number of different opinions at the CV Two meeting, and we listened to their recommendations. If that's the question you're asking, is that right? So one of the community board members very much wanted the storefront to be painted white, and the other community board members very much wanted the storefront to be painted such that it matched the upper windows.
Right. Okay, but your, but your scheme, it doesn't do either of those two. Is that correct? It's more, is it the gray color you were talking about?
We did a review with Pratt, and they said that they were open to painting the upper floor windows to match whatever paint color is proposed for the storefront. So we could have a cohesive facade. We did, we did do a survey of the neighborhood just to see how typical it is that storefronts and upper floor windows are painted differently, and it seems to be much more typical than atypical in the neighborhood. So I don't think we took too much issue with the, with the different colors for the, because the second floor windows really feel like they very much match the stone and architectural character of the building itself. And then the storefront does sort of feel a little bit like it has its own identity. That, I think we're.
Okay. Yes, any other questions? All right, we can, thank you. We can close the hearing. All right, comments? Yes, Patty.
I agree with the approach, which is to kind of make more cohesive the building. I mean, obviously, the use is going to do that, Pratt taking sort of more ownership of it. And I think if there really are some questions still about this secondary cornice, then maybe there should be more research done on it. But I want to say that I'm in full support of the Pratt sign above the doorway, and I think it doesn't take away from the building. It's sort of, it says, it's important to say that it's Pratt. It's always sort of lost. It's not clear when you're there that it, that it's, how important it is to the institution, to its Manhattan presence. And I think it's, it actually also helps to kind of point to the cohesion of the whole building, that there's a single doorway and there's a dominant or single occupant.
Okay, yes, Michael.
I think I agree with that. The, I think the sign is, is fine. With regard to the cornice, I, you said you did some paint research, but if you, if you got to finish as analysis person, they would actually be able to tell you fundamentally from the chemistry of the paint whether or not it's an early cornice. So it's not just looking at the colors, it's looking at the chemistry. And when you're doing your investigation, you can also look for, because there's been so much messing with the structure, you could look for previous fastener and outrigger holes on that thing to tell if it's original or not.
Okay. Other comments?
Yeah, I think that the approach is generally okay. The only thing I would recommend is that since we do know that that secondary cornice was put where it is relatively recently, and they're requesting a cornice in virtually the same location, but just back at the facade, why not just reuse the existing cornice instead of making a new cornice? That way, you're preserving historic material. You're integrating, it's not going to upset the design in any way. The only negative effect, if one deems it such, would be that, that the band of text that would otherwise have gone on that, on that horizontal fascia would have to go into the storefront or, you know, and I think that there's clearly plenty of opportunity for signage in other, other locations. So I think that that would, would be a good solution.
If, in fact, it is historic, is that correct?
I would be, I mean, looking at the photos, I'd, I'd be surprised if it wasn't relatively old. It looks like it's of the type, and it's been around for a while, that it probably is, if not original, then, you know, 1920s, 1910s. So it's, it's not new. What's, what's new is the framing and the structure that's sticking it out a foot and a half off the building, but the thing itself is not new. And everything that they said to describe it indicates that it was an artifact that was repurposed, right? The fact that the sides don't match the front, the structure on the inside. If you look at that photograph, you can see that the, the thing itself has multiple layers of paint. It's all crusty, and it's, it's like kind of a, it looks either cast or pressed, you know, yeah, that it, it just has that look of a technology that wasn't around in the 40s or 50s, or not much used.
Michael, you were going to add something.
I just, I, I go by this building a lot, and I sort of remember that cornice being kind of banged up, so.
Do you want to, okay.
You'll have, if you want to respond, we'll have to reopen the hearing for you to speak.
I know, I mean, I can, I don't know if you want her to speak, or just I can convey that. I think their, their feeling is that they think it was modified or structurally built, but it's not. Sorry. But.
Okay, let me just reopen. Go ahead. No, no, go, go on. During all of our initial site visits to the building, and we did spend some time looking at this thing, we felt exactly as you do, it's quite beat up. It felt, it feels insubstantial. The way that it's tied to the building is, is very strange, and it feels very mishmash. So we felt very confident that it was nonhistoric when we started looking at it originally. I don't think it's in great condition, and I don't think it's been treated well over the years, either just itself or, or its relationship to the building.
Yes, Diana.
I guess I kind of.
Close the hearing, then.
I'm sorry, so moved. Yeah, I sort of, I feel that if it, it still seems rather likely that it is historic, and it's just been, you know, moved around or something, but I think we should have staff at least explore this, what the applicant, and see if it's, you know, to have it not just be discarded, if it's, you know, if it is historic. And if it isn't, doesn't matter, but, you know. There've been some suggestions about how they could work with the situation if it is historic, so. If we were to cast iron pillar or something, we'd be trying to preserve it, so.
Yeah, I would like to agree with, and I would appreciate if they would work with staff as well, because I feel like the, visually, when you look at the building, the whole weighting of it changes a little bit based on this new signage band, and if it is, if the original is, or it, depending upon what you find, it could kind of have you, you may rethink a little bit what you're recommending right there, and, and then I think visually, it's potentially, the bottom could tie in a little better to the top, which it's not, it seems a little heavy to me right now with that gray band where the old cornice was. The other thing is that I do feel like it would be great if you could do a little extra work on the signage elements, because they, they all serve a purpose, but I don't feel like they're cohesive in terms of the building. I don't like the Pratt above the entrance. I feel like it looks like it's applied to that little architectural feature, and I keep wanting to see through it, but if everybody else is okay with that, I'm okay.
Yes, Diana.
I'm okay with them having a large signage. I'm thinking maybe, maybe that's Pratt colors, I don't know.
Must be the branding.
A recall, but I was going to say.
The branding, yeah.
Yeah, maybe it's just that a bit, you know, if it could be something a little more, you know.
No, that's, that's the logo.
Has to be.
That's its location.
Yeah.
I'm not sure where else it would go, but.
But to go back to logos, logos can be done in black and white as well as, you know, so I'm just thinking maybe that would be succeed in their purpose without being, you know, and be a little less, I don't know, it's a thought anyway. But I'm, I'm okay with the size of it, I can.
Okay, so.
And the position.
Let me just, any other comments?
Yeah, just one note, which is that the testimony sounds like it probably is right, that if you want to study that cornice, I mean, it is on the corner of 14th and Seventh, it's shocking that there's only, though, the tax photo is the only picture of that corner that anyone could find. I mean, perhaps doing a little more research on that would, would support the applicant's theory that it wasn't there.
Right. Okay, so just, any other comments?
I mean, I, I think in general, this is fine, and the cornice, I guess I don't feel as strongly as some of the commissioners. It seems that even if the cornice is moved around a bit, and as it looks right now, it does seem very awkward. They're, they're putting something in which is in spirit where the cornice was. However, I think, you know, the first step could be that they work with staff to sort of establish whether this is original, with, whether originally there was a cornice over here. But I think if there wasn't originally, even if it was applied later on, I don't know why we would want to necessarily keep it, but I'm open to that if, if. So because that's what this will engage in, right? They'll take some, look at the photographs, and that'll sort of establish whether this cornice existed or when it came into existence, but then where do we go from there? Yeah. Yeah, you want to?
If it's original, I would support, you know, putting it and having it, you know, it could be in a different position because it probably was originally, obviously. But if it's not original, it came in 1920 or something, I don't think there's a need to preserve it. Would be kind of my reaction, I guess.
So staff had, has done the additional research, and although it is on 14th Street, there was no additional photograph found or documentation as to whether this was original.
You just have to go on the forensics if, you know, what, as far as the analyt, metal, get a, somebody get a metal analysis.
But the idea is that if, in fact, it is original, that it should be incorporated into, into the new storefronts, is that?
I don't feel that way.
I don't feel that way either, but I think other commissioners.
I do, and one of the reasons I do is because, you know, if it is, in fact, old enough, then, then I think we should preserve it just on the basis of historic material. But I also think that there, there, the proposal, as shown as the applicant says, is a bit heavy on signage, and I don't think necessarily we need to have that band of signage as, as signage. So I don't see the harm in, in keeping a piece of historic material and in reducing the overall quantity of signage, or at least making it perhaps more consistently applied.
Right. I think the applicant said that it wasn't their intention to do both, right? So signage the windows and.
Right, but I would do the commission to do so.
Right, I know, but we could, we could fashion it in some way, but, but I think your point is not that. Your point is if they had to relocate the cornice, there is still place for them to put signage which would necessarily, right, that, that would fulfill their, which I think is fine. I think the Pratt sign itself, I don't have any issues with it. And I, you know, there was a comment about these pristine two buildings. You know, 14th Street is, it was hardly pristine, and I do think that, you know, these buildings are, they're very robust. I just, I don't think just putting a sign is going to take away from it, so that's the power of the building, that, so I don't know if we necessarily want to, this is their branding, so I don't know if we necessarily want to change the color of it, but I would recommend we just allow them to go ahead with the sign. Are commissioners okay with that? I know you're not, but.
Well, I don't, it's fine with me, but I would love for them to go look at the rest of the facade, actually, because I'm feeling like they have this bound, it's a lot of signage, then they have, there's no consistency in terms of that and what's happening over the doors, and I just feel like it needs to be pulled together a little better.
Commissioner, there's also, part of the proposal is they have two existing flagpoles, and they want to add two more to make them stretch banners, so maybe, heard much on that, if you.
Right, it's those, those two fins.
Could they do that with the staff?
It's, it's, I mean, it's an interesting thing. It's, it's, it's got a big frontage, and it's on a very busy corridor, and it competes with many, many things happening on 14th Street. So I guess, let me just try and sort of articulate what.
Maybe, maybe we can choose between, if there's signage on the secondary cornice, then there wouldn't be signage on the glass, I mean, one or the other first.
Right, I think that's fine. I think we can, if we feel that the signage, you know, I think the signage on the secondary cornice, regardless of whether it's historic or, you know, they'll, they can research with our staff about the authenticity of that cornice. If it's authentic and original, they should incorporate it. And, you know, Jared, tell me if this can be done, and if it's not, then they can go ahead with, I think, the sort of modern cornice, but why don't we limit the signage to signage on the glass? And so you won't have this overwhelming amount of signage in two places. Does that make sense?
Fine.
Okay. All right. Jared, that would work? Okay, okay. So, Kim. So, Kim? Oh, Jared's gonna give it to you. Sorry?
Just to get the coordinates.
We'll give it to you.
Put the signage on the glass and we are approving the over the door signage. Yeah, I guess so, I don't know. Is there an issue? Well, just ask, I don't have an issue with banners. Because that can be, you know...
Just for clarity, so the Pratt sign is okay, the stretch banners are good. I'm gonna remove this, remove the signage from the cornice and put it, limit it to the glass instead. Okay?
Thank you, Jared.
In the matter of 144 West 14th Street, individual landmark, application is to install, is this working? Application is to install storefront infill, new signage and flagpoles. I note that the two flagpoles were present at the time of designation. I recommend approval finding, approval with modifications, finding that the existing storefront infill is not historic, therefore its removal will not result...
Wait, so isn't that something that's still we're exploring? Can you give us a minute? Are you... That's fine. Almost there. All right, why don't we, we'll vote on this after the next project, we, then, okay? Yeah, okay.
The next item, item seven is an application for a certificate of appropriateness to Borough of Manhattan, docket number 183719. This is 38 Bethune Street, located within the Greenwich Village Historic District. It's building originally built in 1927 as a one-story garage and altered with the addition of two stories in 2004. The application is to enlarge rooftop bulkhead, relocate the chimney, replace windows and doors, modify window openings, install new window openings and install a balcony.
Good afternoon, commissioners, Mary Service, Preservation Staff. 38 Bethune Street is a converted garage building located on the north side of Bethune Street between Greenwich Street and Washington Street in the Greenwich Village Historic District. The building was altered with the addition of two stories in 2004. This application is to modify a rooftop bulkhead, relocate the chimney, modify window openings and replace windows and doors to install a balcony. Preservation Consultant Mary Dirix is here to present the proposal.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Mary Dirix and I'm the Preservation Consultant for this project. With me is William Cummings who will talk about the details. This, well, did we go, okay. This is the existing conditions. For some reason, there are two of them. This was the building in 1940 and it looked similar at designation. And the facade you see now was done in 2004 or approved in 2004. This is the rear. This is existing front facade and proposed front facade. Bill Cummings is gonna come up and go over the details of the changes we want to make to all the facades.
Hello, my name is William Cummings. And we are proposing this modification because we're taking the house from a two-family house to a single-family house, removing an interior staircase. So the client wanted to replace all the existing windows with true double light windows throughout the whole house. Today, they are just applied mullions on the glass. Is this right? Okay, here we have the existing condition and proposed condition. We're also proposing reconfiguring the second floor windows so that they're symmetry above. And because we also have an existing condition, we have a staircase here, which is being removed. And from the interior, this would create a more symmetrical view on the interior. On the back of the house, it does not have any divided light mullions. We're proposing to reconfigure in the existing window locations with divided light, through divided light mullions in a bronze finish. On, this is the existing condition, let's see, oh yeah, facing west. There are no windows right now. We are proposing adding two, four lot line windows that would be aligning with the windows on the front facade. On the opposite side of the building, we are keeping, we are removing some of the windows there and creating divided light windows on the side. The other change which is visible from the street is the reconfiguration of the bulkhead on the roof. We are proposing to install a internal elevator in the house. And to do this, we have to reconfigure the bulkhead on the roof. Here you see it from above. Over here, you see the existing condition where the bulkhead is today with just a staircase. And we would reconfigure it to this position to accommodate the elevator and the staircase. Here you see two renderings, the existing, pardon?
This is the views. It is a rendering and you get an idea of how the side windows relate to the front facade windows. But this is visible, this bulkhead is visible now and it will be visible from the west, heading all the way west.
But it's all new, right?
It's the new, it's basically a new building.
Just a technical question before you get into it. It looks like the new windows are set flush with the brick and the old windows are set in? Am I mistaken in reading that?
It would, that's just in the rendering. They would be in the same location.
Got it.
It's the same plan.
This is further, heading further west, you can still see the bulkhead and further west still. You can just see it all the way down the block. You can see the rear facade and the bulkhead over a low building from the street to the north. And you can see the chimney and of course you can see the facades if you're from the east looking at the building. I think that that's really, and these are the plans. It would be build the oil rub...
Yeah, the materials on the facade we're proposing on the front door, oil rub bronze door, which would be illustrated here, light fixtures. These would also be in a dark oil rub bronze, not in this polished material. And then all the window mullions would also be in a powder coated, oil rub bronze finish over aluminum.
Oh, just that the garage door is going to be frosted glass. And there are a lot of examples of that kind of frosted glass garage door in the village. And there are a lot of examples too, here's one of the, of the upper floor windows, not necessarily relating to the ground floor. And also, in this case, the upper floor windows of these early 20th century commercial buildings tend to relate to themselves. So you see that the windows, unlike the existing facade, they normally are consistent. We're gonna just go back to the existing proposal.
Okay, are there any questions? Any questions? We have one speaker, Kelly Carroll.
Kelly Carroll, Historic Districts Council. The creation of four rectangular windows separated by thin brick piers is out of proportion for a brick building's openings, which would have been punched windows, not these large expanses. The applicant provided several good examples of window ribbon configurations in the vicinity and HTC suggests the design move more toward this or keep the existing. The use of the steel mullions in the existing design works quite well. HTC believes that approved alterations to facades in historic districts should be improvements and aesthetics of a higher caliber than what was there previously. This proposal is trying to create a symmetrical top to an asymmetrical bottom and this attempt at regularization has lost something interested in the process. Thank you.
Are there any more speakers on this item? All right, Community Board recommends approval of the replacement of the window infill and denial of the alterations of window openings on the facade and denial of the lot line windows unless they match the height of the front facade windows. So I know that they, this resolution is from November. Is this, did you change your design in response?
We did change our design in response. We lowered the side windows so that they match the front windows now. And I think we've already responded in terms of why we feel that the, that the front windows are good, are appropriate and that you see a lot of these kind of windows in general in early 20th century commercial buildings.
Okay, yes, Adi, go ahead.
Had you thought about continuous sort of like ribbon-like without the central brick pier?
We have thought about that, but we felt like four equal windows on that scale of the side would be preferable.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All right, we can close the hearing. All right, comments?
I think the only thing that really I find troubling about this is that central brick pier. I think there's some confusion about it. The renderings show it being about one brick wide. The elevation shows it, the photo montage elevation, you can't see the page number, shows it being a brick and a half wide. And then the dimensioned plan shows it is two foot and change wide. And I think that, I think what happens when you have that brick, right, see if you look at the elevation, it show, I mean, because the brick scale, the hatch of brick scale is completely wrong here, so it's not, you can't really judge it. But if you look at the dimensioned plans, it's totally different than what's shown here. I personally think that Adi's idea is a great idea and just make it one big long ribbon window. Because what happens when you put that central pier in is that it creates a symmetrical top that seems to be fighting what's happening below, whereas before it kind of transitioned nicely. And it was more industrial, more simple. It just seems like the brick pier is weird. I'd take it rid of it, but...
But I don't know what the, I can look and see what it means to the interior of the room. It doesn't? Okay. Because it's not, there's not a wall over there. Okay, I don't feel so strongly about it, but I think it would, it would improve the design. We could do that. We could ask them to remove the pier and disintegrate it into a window. Okay, any other comments or suggestions? All right, good. Anything else? Michael, do you want to read that?
Regarding 38 Bethune Street, Greenwich Village Historic District, the application is to enlarge rooftop bulkhead, relocate chimney, replace windows and doors, modify window openings and install new window openings and install a balcony. I note that the building's style, scale, materials and details are among features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Greenwich Village Historic District. I also note the building was altered with an addition of two, with an addition of two stories in 2004. I recommend approval, finding that, that the proposed work will not eliminate any significant architectural features, that the bulkhead, although visible along Bethune Street corridor to West Street, is in keeping with the types of stucco cloud rooftop accretions found elsewhere in the district, that the relocated chimney, although visible over the primary facade, will be seen in context with a modest addition and is consistent with the chimneys of other buildings. Along Bethune Street, its chimneys are also visible over primary facades. That the new steel multi-pane case and windows will harmonize with the types of windows found elsewhere in the district and will relate well to the building's typology as an altered 1920s garage. That the oil rubbed bronze material of the new garage door and entry door will harmonize with the doors of other converted garage buildings found elsewhere in the district. That altering the facade of the modest upper stories constructed post-designation to modify window openings will not impact any historic features. That the rear window openings will relate well to the building's overall fenestration. That the proposed balcony at the rear of the building will be only minimally visible from a narrow view corridor on West 12th Street. That the proposed work will not detract from the building or Greenwich Village Historic District. However, the applicant will work with staff to eliminate the central brick pier on floors two and three and create a continuous glazed opening.
All in favor? Any opposed? Applications approved.
Okay, commissioners, item eight is an application for a certificate of appropriateness to Borough of Manhattan, docket number 183800. This is 142 Fifth Avenue, AKA 5 West 19th Street, located within the Ladies Mile Historic District. This is a neo-renaissance style store and loft building designed by Robert Maniki and built in 1898 to 99. And the application is to legalize the construction of a rooftop pergola installed without Landmark's Preservation Commission permits.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Julianne Wiesner-Kunasey, Preservation Staff. 142 Fifth Avenue is located at the northwest corner of Fifth Avenue and West 19th Street in the Ladies Mile Historic District. The proposal is to legalize the installation of a pergola at the roof without Landmark's Preservation Commission permits. Staff provided supplemental photo, which is attached to the back of your handouts or the front possibly, demonstrating the maximum visibility of the pergola over West 19th Street facade as seen from the corner of Fifth Avenue and West 18th Street. And the applicant, Joan Cummings, is available to answer any questions.
Just to explain, this is the floor, the roof plan, excuse me. It's in several different levels. This was approved by Landmark's Commission. And then it goes up here and it goes around here. It's different little levels here. This is a pergola question. This is the elevator bulkhead, stair bulkhead and water tank. These are pictures of the roof, so you can see this is the stair bulkhead with a screen in front of it here, which is where our pergola really is. That's the same screen. And if it goes down at this point here, and we had investigated possibly moving the pergola back, but what happens is this is here, this is in different levels. There's an entrance to the stairwell here, so it really kept it here. If it's over here, you have these chimneys coming up and the water tanks. So it's almost six feet under the pergola, the wood thing, so it can't be lowered either. We tried to find different ways of doing it, but we can't, we couldn't really. I'm just gonna show you this one here, which is actually views from the street. So this is halfway between 18th and 19th on the east side of Fifth Avenue. You can see it right here. Over here, this is the most visible from the corner of 18th Street and Fifth Avenue. But it really, it's just for a half a block, do you see it? Everywhere else, it's definitely not seen from the street. And not from the north, not from the east, far east.
Can you just explain exactly, obviously you can see a tree, but exactly what you can see, what part of the pergola or whatever is visible, because not all of it is, right?
If you look at there, I think that's probably small, I can bring this over. You can just barely see the top. You can just barely see the top of the pergola here. And then over here, just barely see it too.
But just for clarification, the page that's attached to the front of your handout shows it slightly more visible. That was when staff went out and had visibility. So you're looking at the building with the cornice in the picture. So you see the sidewall of the building, and then you see a cornice beyond it. So that photo shows this, what, when staff went out into the site, is what the maximum visibility was.
From the other side.
And what had been approved? I'm a little confused about.
This, this is coming in as legalization.
You said something else had come before.
All the decking was approved by Landmarks. So, so all of this decking that's here and around here, all was approved, as well as the penthouse here, in a previous application.
How long ago?
Three years ago. Oh, the owner is here, so.
2012. It was approved, sorry. My name is Michael Bays, B-E-Y-S. I'm the owner, or technically it's a co-op, I'm a tenant in the owning co-op. And everything was approved at staff level in 2012. So approximately 900 square feet of new addition was all approved by John Graham, who was the staff level examiner at the time, as well, as Ms. Humphries pointed out, decking and everything else. And we, we missed the pergola.
Meaning what, missed? What do you mean by missed?
One, we didn't realize that we had to go through landmarks because it's not a permanent structure. And two, we thought the way we built it was not visible, or that the portion, because it was wood, did not need to be legalized. So it only came up that it needed to be legalized in 2016 because of something unrelated to, to, to our rooftop, something else with the building, and they put this as well. But the, the point is really one of proportion. It's that 99% of what we did, which was an entire 900-square-foot rooftop addition, is totally invisible from the street and was approved at staff level, as well as the, as well as the decking. That's what I meant by missed it.
I know, but if, if, if the decking had to be approved, you'd think that you would have imagined that the pergola would have needed to be approved.
I'm an owner, I'm a lawyer. I try to do, I try to do everything right and by the book, and I apologize that we've missed this. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Any speakers on the side?
So just to clarify, the, the work that the Center for Start-up Law and the Rules know, that what we should as an example, and, and it's before us because the pergola is, is, you know, visible. But I mean, I think it's fine. It's, I think it's minimally visible. I don't know. Any concerns?
Well, I do have something that...
You know, if you know enough that you have to come to landmarks for approval and you're getting an entire project approved, that it is unusual that you wouldn't include the pergola. So I, you know, and you're an attorney, so attorneys are very, you know, know the rules. So I, I guess, I appreciate, I agree that it's not that visible, but I guess conceptually I have a problem with the process, so.
Right. I find that, I mean, the issue is about the, yeah, I'm just...
You know, we always struggle with the fact in these situations where, you know, the tail is wagging the dog in this instance, right? It's done, so then do we say, take it down?
Well, I think something like this, I mean, it's standard as whether it's not a visibility is appropriate. So it's, I think we look at this to see if we have would have approved it in the first instance. And that's the way we should look at it. And so, from that perspective, I think we allow for visible additions and, and in, and Ladies Mile in particular. So if you look at the amount of visibility, I think it's very much within the legal. So leaving us, I think none of us really, um, um, legal work. And we have staff, of course, and staff who issues violations and, and get people to panic. So that's part of the process, is to encourage owners to pad for here and the, or what the commission is, is modified, we recommend that, or we...
There's, you know, to mo, I, I think that if possible, it really should be modified, the pergola itself, although I recognize that that's a lot of work and potentially things are growing on it already. But the, the issue is that it's a very narrow building, and the cornice is, I mean, it's, the width or the narrowness of the building is very distinctive, and the cornice is very beautiful i- in the way that it kind of caps that narrow dimension. And it seems that the deck comes all the way up to the front, to the edge of the cornice, I guess that's at 19th Street. And I'm wondering, if it were set back just a bit, so it's not square, let's say, or squareish.
It actually is set back.
I know, it's set back a little, but it, the point is it's not sort of centered more or, I'm wondering if we could lose a few feet and move towards the center of that already narrow dimension, and that might make it considerably less visible. But, you know, it is just a pergola, it's not permanent.
The thing to think about is that, you know, we have these visible, there are lots of parts when you look at a building where it isn't visible at all, right? So these are the shut, these are, you're walking down the street and some corners visible, you walk closer, it becomes invisible. So the idea of seeing the cornice, um, there are a lot of, they don't, you know, there are views where you see the cornice without you being completely unpermitted by any kind of pergola behind it. I just sort of think a bit from the context of other sort of minimal visible, they should be seen. But other commissioners?
Yeah. I, I'm, I agree with Adi on this one. As far as I'm concerned, the cornice is the most prominent and important element on this building. And I'm, I'm not only bothered by the construct, I'm also bothered by the tree. It seems like this little weird beard growing up out of this, again, a prominent and very regal cornice. So I'm, I'm not in favor of this at all.
Others, yes?
Yeah. Obviously, as you stated earlier, we try to avoid having people, you know, not go forward with illegal work. But leaving that aside for the moment, what we would have done is see whether this is something we would have initially approved. So I think my answer would be, we do approve pergolas. They're temporary structures, so take them a little less maybe concern than more permanent structures. At the same time, the first thing we would have done would be to say, is there a way to make it less visible? So the architect was arguing somewhat that there isn't a way to do that, so.
Well, not in height, but I think.
Yeah, so.
You said that.
Yeah, so the question is, is it, yeah, is it, is it something we could approve? I think, yeah, we would have approved some kind of temporary, we might well have approved a pergola, because we do tend to approve all sorts of greenery on roofs and stuff and temporary structures of this nature. But it is, we would have tried to get it minimized. So the question is, is there a way, in fact, and that's what the other commissioners are discussing, that we could make it a little less intrusive, particularly with regard to the, the cornice, the important cornice there. So that's what I would support here, that we could approve it, but it should be, it should be some reduction to try to.
Okay, so with, uh, we're not, I think, but a hearing from you and from three of you that as is, you...
What could this say?
Is that correct?
Yes.
Four.
Okay. All right, so what does mean is that, well, why don't we suggest that we work with stuff? It doesn't mean you have to set it back, the facade of the...
19th Street.
Uh, 18th Street.
Is it 18 or 19?
I think it's, um, oh, 19th Street.
19.
Yeah, or, or shrink it.
Yeah, I mean, that's right. Shrink it. It is, there's no wearis.
No, just...
Okay.
With what? With what? Set it back where you make it narrow.
Continue to be, to be, Ron.
Might change foot.
Right, but the, the visibility is reduced if they set it back from the edge.
Correct.
Right, that would work if they could, but if they couldn't, they could slice a foot or two off of it, which takes it away from the edge. Same thing, same thing.
Other strategies to achieve the end.
It's not, it's not very big, it's just...
No, it's kind of the height, I think, is...
You can't, there's no dimension.
Okay.
So.
So we're reducing the dimensions to make it less visible.
Away from the...
Yeah, let the staff...
In the matter of 142...
No, on your point, no, no, but your point was to, there could be other ways to make it less visible, is that right?
I, I thought the first option is we suggest your voice to lift it up and move it a couple of feet, but then it's clear you can't move it, so it's...
We give them the option.
The one that everybody else is talking about.
Right. Perfect.
So maybe, so, could maybe some options here, why don't we say?
Give them the options. Of moving it, or, or...
Lowering it.
Well, we can't lower it, they said it's already low. Or decreasing the dimensions.
Let the staff find a way to, the most sensible way to.
What the jackpots say, as I was saying. 142 Fifth Avenue, AKA West, 5 West 19th Street in the Ladies Mile Historic District, an application to legalize the construction of a rooftop pergola without Landmarks Preservation Commission permits. I recommend approval with modifications, finding that the installation of the pergola did not alter significantly or eliminate any significant architectural features of the roof. The pergola is simply designed, typical in size, and features a finish typical of rooftop accretions. The pergola is visible from select locations at a distance within the context of a streetscape of buildings in varying heights, and the owner will work with staff to either, to modify the pergola by either moving it or altering the dimensions of the pergola.
Second, all in favor? Any opposed? Application's approved.
Okay. Commissioners, the next item on the agenda is item nine. It's an application for a certificate of appropriateness, Borough of Manhattan, docket number 193401. This is 31 West 71st Street, located within the Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District. This is a neo-Gothic-style apartment hotel designed by Robert T. Lyons, built in 1917. The application is to legalize the installation of marquee and to re-clad it with new fabric.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Timothy Shaw, Preservation Staff. 31 West 71st Street is an apartment hotel building located on the north side of West 71st Street, between Central Park West and Columbus Avenue, within the Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District. At the time of designation, as seen here, there was no marquee or canopy at the building. What there were, two decorative lion head support hooks above the second floor, as seen here. The historic tax photos, actually photos of neighboring buildings, you can see that there was a canopy, probably supported by poles, which you can't see, and it did not quite fit within the rectilinear entrance. You can see the shadow of it here. Note that the lion head supports were also present at that time. An original Landmarks Commission permit was issued in 2009 for the installation of a canvas clad canopy with integrated light fixtures supported by brass poles at the sidewall. Following that approval, it was determined that the poles could not be installed as proposed due to a water valve in the sidewall. The applicant then submitted an application for a canvas clad hanging marquee in 2011. No staff level action was taken on that application, but the marquee was installed as proposed without a permit. In 2015, as a result of unrelated investigation of the building, Commissioners Enforcement Department noted the presence of the marquee, and a violation was issued for installation and non-compliance. The applicant is now applying to legalize the canvas clad marquee as is, and also to re-clad it. Here is a detailed photo of one of those lion head support hooks, as it's being used now to support the marquee. And here are photos of the existing from the east, head on here. You'll note the, it is slightly wider, the entrance, but it is the same width as the support hooks above. There also are integrated light fixtures within the curved underside below the marquee. The applicant is also proposing to re-clad it with a new black canvas with new signage at the sides and front. And this is the drawing for that. The Arthur Harris, the architect, is here to answer any questions. I may not be able to...
So, so they, they submitted this to us as it is?
I'm sorry?
They submitted this to us as it is, right? But we never approved it?
Right.
Why did we, why, what happened?
Uh, it, the, the approval sort of, it just got backlogged a bit in staff, and then I think there was a misunderstanding of the, if we took no action, that that essentially meant approval. So they went ahead and installed it as a, as their understanding of the, the rules. And, but it didn't actually, wasn't really picked up on for a few years after that.
Would this have been a staff level approval at the time?
Uh, no, it wouldn't. But the canopy as approved, was, the canopy with the support poles was approved.
Okay. Any questions? All right. We have one speaker, Sean Chrisandy.
Good afternoon, Commissioner Sean Chrisandy for Landmark West. As a rule, the Landmark West Certificate of Appropriateness Committee opposes legalization of work installed without permits. When property owners ignore the Landmarks Law and make changes without Commission guidance and consent, all too frequently the results are, at best, unremarkable and at worst, destructive. In either case, the practice of legalizing alterations after the fact, in essence, penalizes property owners who often go to great lengths to comply with regulations by rewarding those who flout the law. In the case of 31 West 71st Street, however, we have La Quinta. La Quinta is an 800-plus location chain with nearly 9,000 employees. They have experience with landmarks, being the stewards of Harry Mulligan's former Aberdeen Hotel in K-Town, 1902 to '04 apartment hotel, which has been an individual landmark since 2000. While one might say they should know better, it appears as though they do, and the culprit in this case was Comfort Inn and Roadway Inn that preceded it, each with their own colorful and extensive rap sheet. Landmark West hopes that with La Quinta at the helm, the notorious Yelp reviews, detailed police reports, and at least some of the salacious New York Post headlines will subside. Architecturally, Landmark West prefers marquees to canopies, and especially in an instance such as this where the original function is returned. The proposed covers color and materials seem appropriate and will hopefully portend a fresh start. Our committee supports approval of the certificate of appropriateness. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more speakers on the side? All right. Community Board, seven, recommends denial based on the fact that the, the design of the marquee is inappropriate to the historic character of the building and district. All right.
Just a quick question, Tim. The detailing of the hook to the, at the staff level, did you find any issue with that, or are you fine with it?
Well, we didn't approve this at staff level, so we didn't look at that.
No, I think, uh...
I mean, this?
He's asking what we think of it now, then.
With those lion heads, I think that, that's sort of an escutcheon, it's a historic, I mean, it is a clue that, that there may well have been a canopy of this, that's suspended from the, from the facade.
We just, we just don't have photograph of it, but they are, the hooks are there, or the heads are there, even at the tax photos, just by then they'd already made that change.
Yes, Dana.
Would you, just comment on the precedent for lighted canopies in this area?
Uh, there definitely are, there are lit canopies, I mean, I, we don't have, I don't, I don't have the documentation here. I mean, it's something that is seen. A lot of entrance canopies for apartment buildings, and obviously for the heavier, large metal and glass marquees at other hotels and apartments, you do see it down lighting. So it, it is seen in plant canvas, plant canopies like this. I can think of, you know, one at 2172, I'm actually dealing with in a separate application.
Yeah, that needs a specific, just the general concept of the...
Yeah, it is seen, it's, I think it's sometimes...
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Thank you, so we can close the hearing. All right. Comments? Any concerns with this? Okay. All right. Wellington?
In the matter of 31 West 71st Street, Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District, the application is to legalize the installation of a marquee and to re-clad it with new fabric. Noting that the building's scale, style, scale, materials, and details among the features that contribute to the special architectural historic character of the Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District, I recommend approval, finding the presence of an entrance marquee is in keeping with signage found at hotel buildings of a similar age and style, that the size of marquee is well scaled to the entrance and does not overwhelm any significant architectural features of the building, that the presence of historic decorative lion head support hooks justify the use of a hanging marquee above the entrance, that while the use of canvas is atypical of, at the hanging marquee, it is in keeping with the entrance canopies found at hotel and apartment buildings of a similar age and style found elsewhere within the historic district, and that the new black canvas cladding with signage and logos La Quinta Inn and Suites will not detract from any significant architectural features of the building.
All in favor? Any opposed? Application's approved.
Okay, Commissioners, before we move on to the three meeting items, I just want to go back and briefly mention that item six, where we, the staff comments, we're actually not going to take...
Right, so the Pratt project, we won't take any action, and they'll come back with their... They need to sort of go back and think about their signage, and won't have the opportunity to come back and explain their needs, okay?
Okay, so then we'll move to public meeting agenda, the first, there are three. The first one is docket number nineteen zero zero nine-two. This is forty-six Carmine Street, located within the Greenwich Village Historic District Extension Two. This is a federal-style rowhouse built in eighteen twenty-seven twenty-eight. The application is to alter the roof, was last presented on October twenty-fifth, two thousand sixteen.
Good afternoon Commissioners, Julianne Hesner, Kinesi Preservation Staff. Forty-six Carmine Street is located in the middle of the block, on the south side of Carmine Street. The proposal as presented at the public hearing on October twenty-fifth was to remove a portion of the sloped roof, construct a flat roof with a portion extending one foot beyond the roof's edge, and extend the face, excuse me, extend the face of the dormer downward to create a terrace, and install a ramp. This work will not be visible from a public thoroughfare. The Commissioners requested additional documentation of this alteration, specifically a rendering, and a more detailed illustration of the structure for the one-foot projection. The proposal before you today incorporates the requested rendering, as well as existing and proposed detail sections. The proposal itself remains unchanged. The original presentation materials are included as a reference.
The Commissioners remember this item, okay, all right. So Julianne, just, the extension, that happened later, there's some alterations already at the rear in terms of the roofline? What was that, I seem to, right, at the L, right? Okay.
Exactly, this is a, an existing, previous construction.
Okay. Commissioners, do we have any questions? So the issue was that it projects out, and I think last time, they had, their drawings were much more schematic, and I think we just wanted to sort of understand the effect of the projection. It gives them, I believe, a balcony of five feet versus four feet. All right, so any comments? Are there any concerns? Okay. All right, Janie, do you want to meet that?
Where did this come from? Okay, thank you. In the matter of docket nineteen dash zero zero nine-two, forty-six Carmine Street, Greenwich Village Historic District Extension Two, the application is to alter the roof. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Greenwich Village Historic District Extension. I recommend approval, finding that the proposed work will only affect a small portion of the roof and will maintain the historic gable pitch at the side of the roof, that the proposed work will not replace any historic fabric except possibly a small amount of simple framing, and will not be visible from a public thoroughfare, that the massing and profile of the western edge of the roof and rear facade of this building were altered with the construction of an addition, and the rear of the adjoining rowhouse has been increased in height. Therefore, the proposed work will not diminish uniformly pitched roofing or an intact historic profile at the rear of this building or the row. That the extension of the terrace, one foot beyond the roof edge and lengthening of the dormers will be modest alterations, that the proposed railing will be typical in height and well scaled to the terrace and building, and that the proposed work will not diminish the special architectural and historic character of the building or the Greenwich Village Historic District Extension.
All in favor? Any opposed? Application's approved.
Second meeting item is an application for a certificate of appropriateness of Borough of Brooklyn, docket number nineteen zero one six one. This is four seventy-six Washington Avenue, located within the Clinton Hill Historic District. It's an altered wood-framed house built prior to eighteen eighty-two, and the application is to demolish the existing building and construct a new building, which was last presented on September twentieth, two thousand sixteen.
Good afternoon Commissioners, Derek Danner and Preservation Department Staff. This property is located in Clinton Hill Historic District, on the west side of Washington Avenue, between Gates and Green Avenue. Please note that at the time of designation, the building was clad in aluminum siding and was described as a three-story framed house, built prior to eighteen eighty-two. All of the architectural features, with the exception of a late nineteenth-century cornice, have been removed, and the building has been totally sited over at least two times. We have some historic photographs from the nineteen sixties, which shows the pre-existing condition prior to designation, which shows the cornice that is still currently there today, and the wood siding that's underneath. There was also an addition of a porch at the front side. Currently, this is what the building looks like today. The aluminum siding has been removed since. And the proposal before is to demolish the existing building, construct a new building. It was previously heard on the September twentieth public hearing, and there was no action taken. This is what was shown previously. It's existing. At the time, at that time, the consensus of the Commissioners was support for demolition of the existing building. However, most Commissioners were expressed concerns about the design of the previously proposed building in terms of its window size and the treatment of the facade details. Some Commissioners felt that the new building could reference the historic building in terms of recalling the gap in the original height, while other Commissioners could support a new building with no reference to the historic building at all. Therefore, the architect has revised the proposed design of the building, and will present these changes and address Commissioners' concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Derek. Make a motion to reopen the hearing.
Good afternoon Commissioners, Tom Brandonback from MB Design Architaphs. So one of the things we did was identify other wood-framed houses. We're still proposing a wood-framed house. There was some debate about what the material might be of the new house that we're proposing. And within the district and within the neighboring blocks, there are a number of wood houses of varying scale and style, some of which are nearby and have a base and three stories above, and are relatively wide. And you can see these in the context of both apartment buildings and brownstones that the wood houses predated. And we have, you know, I think, three or four pages showing these wood houses, which is to say that we're still proposing to replace the existing house with a wood express house, partly because we wanted to maintain the sort of variety that formed the corner right now in terms of their construction. And also, there's a very nice intact set of brownstones adjacent to it. One is lacking a stoop, but otherwise, they're very much intact, and we felt like keeping this as a contrast to those, maintain the integrity of that set. So... We went through the existing condition before. I think I'll remind you that it's, right now, what's exposed is a fake brick that's over a series of layers of siding. The interior is only intact because there's shoring, most of it's come down, and then the extension is completely down. Building Department is very anxious to have the site safe again. So that's, that's the existing, that's the existing elevation in a streetscape. And so one of the things that we're proposing in terms of massing is to actually re-establish the massing relative to the, the street wall relative to this set of brownstones. So in the last iteration, we were setting back, and we were really expressing the volume, attempting to express the volume of the existing house with its little gap, which we had maintained in the previous iteration. In this, we're erasing that. And we've flipped the entry to this side, so that it's within the sort of rhythm established by these brownstones. So the entry is on the right corner, and the street wall comes up to the, even with the brownstones. In the back, it's just a very simple, regular mass that's brought out to the depth of the neighboring extension and ground floor. So in terms of the layout of the front, we have three windows wide, we obviously have three stories now, there's no setback. We have expressed a sort of cornice, which I'll explain in the elevations following, and we've expressed a base with the entry on this right-hand side, so that this ribbon is maintained. This also has a, every, actually, all of them have their entries on the right side. This is what was previously presented, there's the sort of remnant of that gap, this was set back, the bulkhead was on this side, and there was concern over the material palette with the shingle, a sort of lack of detail in addition to the massing, and the size of the fenestration. What we're proposing now reestablishes that height with the neighbors, erases the gap completely, but we still have three windows that are, and three floors, four floors, at the end, the garden floor. There's a higher floor at what's equivalent to the parlor. This is a multifamily building, so there's entry on grade on this side. We've expressed a base with a sort of narrow batten, if you will, and this is all stained dark gray, so it has a dark base expression. And then, there's, there's a series of sort of fins and horizontals that divide up the facade with a vertical wood in cedar behind it. And then, at the top, the, where, as an expression of cornice, we have the boards missing, and there's a, there's a narrow gap between them. You will not see the stair bulkhead, which is on this side now, except for through the sort of lattice of the, of the cornice. So we're trying to get a little bit more depth and expression into this. I think one of the criticisms of the last game was that it was a little underdetailed and, and, and all. That was the previous front and back. This is the current front and back. So in the back, it's been simplified a little bit. There's some small balconies, three-six by six feet wide, and that basically hold this corner. This is not, this is minimally visible, there are visibility notices. So that was the previous iteration as a rendering. This is the proposed design now. So you can see a little bit of the transparency in that band of cornice. So this is a sort of rail and a pair of bits. That's previous and currently proposed, which is significantly sort of softer and hopefully more depth and detail. This is the view from the rear. I mean, I don't think we, there's, there's some, I suppose, in theory, there's some visibility through this, but it's very difficult to see. So the, what we're proposing as a, as a material palette is the, this is the base, a gray stain, cedar board, and batten. One of the details that we have in the vertical fins is, let me go back. In these verticals, and in the, in the, in the top piece, the cornice, those are clad, and we're proposing those to be clad in a tinted zinc, which is all meant to bring the palette, create a warm palette that works nicely with the adjacent brownstone. So the cedar siding will be, have a, have a clear stain and be sealed matte to bring it closer to this zinc color, and marry to the neighboring brownstones more closely. So it's all a very warm matte palette. These are the other elevations, very minimal flat roof. There's our little projected balconies in the back. There's a recessed entry that's all clad in the, in the board and batten with a thin zinc clad canopy roof. So this is, this is then a wall section showing, showing that cladding. The cladding on the vertical is really only on the tip of it. So it's, it projects a full foot from the, from the wood siding. The outermost six inches are tapered from four to two inches, and then the inner six inches are all wood. So it's, it's, it's only the outermost tapering point. And part of that's done just for construction, to keep that a nice, nice edge, as opposed to dimensional lumber and having joints and that, and worrying about how those things will line up. And it gives it a little bit more durability. So the top is then zinc, and the tips of the verticals are zinc. All the horizontals and the, and the, the cladding itself is the stained cedar. There, you can see it better. So it's, it's the slightly darker sort of yellow. That's, there's zinc, and everything else is cedar. Those are the existing plans, proposed plans.
I have a question. Yes.
Was the original wood building, that then was no longer wood, a contributing building?
It wasn't given a style, and it's called an altered framed house, built prior to eighteen eighty-two, so it's, I would argue that it's not a contributing building.
Not a contributing building. Because the contributing buildings were, for the most part, brownstones or townhouses.
Yeah. Go ahead. Well, the designation report was written before we used that sort of language identifying contributing in contributing buildings. The other thing is, it's in very, very poor condition, and if I could speak to...
Yes, we still have the old renovation, and it has been very poor shape prior to the current owner. The actual report, he did purchase it a year or two ago. He immediately put it in some shoring gracing, and the current building has been very concerned about the condition of the building for some time. concerned about the condition historically for some time.
Right, so I understand that it was altered, and I understand that it was in bad condition and mostly, pretty much demolished, but do we then, do we still consider its sort of original style?
You mean what replaces it?
Yeah, just in terms of its definition, defining what was there before. So, we know that defining what was there today is highly altered and in terrible shape. But what's highly altered and terrible shape? Is that thing that's altered and terrible shape a style that we think is, describes this district or contributes to it?
The existing, the existing...
Okay, good. The original or the...
I don't know.
Right, so, I think what Abby's asking, what was the building originally before it was altered, and whether that was a typology that existed in the district. So, I think it was a, was it a frame house or what was it?
Was it, yeah, it's a wood frame house. It's surrounded by buildings of, you know, neo-Gracks and then the Romanesque Revival, and then it was a one-off frame that looked like...
Right, so, okay. So, the district has frame houses, it has brownstones and other kinds of townhouses, but I think that just the criteria and why the stress has been on, like, significantly altered is because if buildings have been altered to an extent that it retains very little of its historic fabric, we have either identified it as no style. In this district, it preceded when the commission was identifying no style in such buildings, so we, doesn't have that category. But otherwise, in fact, we just talked about it today, about, in Sullivan Thompson, that certain buildings are altered to the extent that they become non-contributing. So, I think in this particular case, what one can delve from the report is that it was significantly altered. If you look at the pictures, that tells you something, and it suggests that it's not contributing. Whether it clearly states that is, I think, our discretion. But a part of the argument is that not only is it just altered pretty much beyond recognition, it's also in such a dilapidated state that bringing it back, it seems like it's possibly a complicated issue and perhaps not feasible. I think when we saw this last time, the general, I think the commission, did not ask them to go back and pursue whether it was to keep the building. Yes?
Aren't you going to the renderings of the proposed, like, twenty-one A and Adam Higginson? My question is about how you're viewing, I mean, the big change here, or one of the big changes, anywhere that was fine. That's fine. This is probably the most extreme version of your question. You made a choice. In adding detail, you made a grid. The grid has horizontal elements and vertical elements. You've given rather notable primacy to the vertical elements as opposed to the horizontal ones. Why?
Partly, it's the proportion of the site itself. It's slightly wider than a typical brownstone, so it's, the vertical stripes basically give it, make it seem, you know, it, when we had, we had, you know, when you, when you wear the, I tend to look a little heavy if I have my horizontal striped shirt.
Okay, got it.
So, we had a version where it was, where the horizontals on the verticals were very, much closer in length, and it, not only did it seem sort of ill-proportioned, but the, it then had a very sort of chuckerboard, gritty read. And we wanted, and we wanted to have a little bit more depth and detail to it, to sort of relate to the texture that you see to the ground, which is very textured.
Well, I understand the argument from the point of view of the aesthetics of the object you're creating, but I'm still not sure I understand why we should view that as the appropriate way to go in terms of historic, you know, the fit within the context. Help me understand why that, why that choice of a vertical kind of expression that, especially from this view and perhaps from other views in real life, would very much emphasize a kind of Baroque scale, you know, where you're jumping the whole building, a monumental scale, as opposed to a more floor-by-floor kind of scale.
Yeah, I, this would be the most difficult rendering to defend in that regard, if you understand. So, I'm going to go, I'm going to try to make it easier and go back to something like that. I think part, part of it is trying to have, introduce a sort of level of texture that fits within the district. I think the criticism last time was that it was sort of underdetailed, flat, it was sort of like a beach house or something like that. And that the sort of craft of, craft of the wood made up of pieces and the, you know, pieces covering joints, it has to, it's an expression of the material, how it's put together, and it affords the sort of texture that we felt was sort of harmonious with this, that that texture related to the framing of the windows as well as the detail at the top.
All right, other questions? Are there any other questions? There are no other questions, we can close the hearing. All right, comments? Yes, I do.
I feel, I think that there's a strange kind of jumbling of materials and proportions. So, I completely understand with the, now, I understand, that the original was highly altered and in terrible shape, which allows us to, A, think about the demolition of the existing, and secondly, to imagine something new or other, could be contemporary or historic in its, in its idiom. So, I understand that. What I'm not understanding, and maybe, maybe others do have a better time with this, it seems to me that deciding to use the wood references the, or points to, the original wood-clad diminutive building, the smaller building, the one that had the gap, the one that was only, you know, two and a half stories. And as soon as they moved over to kind of aligning with the edge of the townhouses of the brownstones, it wants to kind of not be the wood anymore. In other words, to answer Michael Goldwin's question, had, I think, had we seen this elevation rendered in stone or in brownstone, we might not have asked about the vertical articulation or the extra width. It would have been sort of of a kind. It would have been a, you know, continuing the language of the townhouses. So, I think that this thing is kind of working against itself. If it's going to be wood, it seems to me it should be the smaller building. If it's going to be the bigger building, it seems to me that it needs to speak more directly to the materiality of the townhouses. And I also would understand a whole claim, an idea for something new altogether, and I get that, but I need to be convinced that this is it.
Right, the only thing, you know, just on your point about the smaller building and, so, right, it's filling up the site in a different way as opposed to what was there before, but I think the first couple of slides that they showed us was to, you know, whether it did or not convince commissioners, is that the district has a variety of frame houses themselves, so in this material, that fits different widths and heights. And I do think their intent is, in terms of the wood, is to not erase the memory of what was on the site historically. So, there, it's, you know, again, it's a sort of a challenging site in a way of trying to maybe have it all in some ways, right? Because there is, I think, a sentiment, which is, I don't want to let go of the fact that this used to be a frame house. So, somewhere where you're walking down the street, you don't want somebody to think that, well, no, there's a brownstone that sat here, because a brownstone did not sit here. But the scale allows the continuity of the streetscape in, I think, a more successful way than their earlier iteration. So, which was a novel idea, but I think more complicated to execute. So, I understand, maybe they're not there as yet, but I think that's kind of, at least, what I picked up from their presentation. Yes, other thoughts?
All right, I'm okay with the, with the width is shown because of the examples shown. I don't think that there is necessarily one way to do it, and I don't think that they're locked into the association of the wood house with the smaller house with the gap, although I must say, I thought the original massing was really, really good and interesting, and I'm sad to see it go. But I don't want to let that regret color my view of what's been proposed. I think that, I think that what's been proposed is appropriate. I think that it does what it needs to do. The image I have in my head is of, it's not in this district, but like, these art deco buildings that are small-scale art deco that pop up in Greenwich Village or in Brooklyn Heights, you know, these totally anomalous little things that by virtue of scale and some detail seem to work even though they're the different colors, different material. I think that this could be okay. I, I'm, I don't think it's as good as it could be. I don't think it's perfect. I think that the verticality of it is peculiar and kind of overly monumental in a district where I don't think you see a lot of that kind of approach to how you build a single-family house. But again, I think that it's kind of its own thing, and I think it works in terms of scale, it works in terms of depth of detail. I think this rendering is particularly unflattering in terms of the depth. I think the depth that's shown in the exonometrics is rather significant and would give it a level of detail. I just, I find a lot of decisions about it peculiar, but I don't think that that would render it inappropriate. So, I would, I would vote for it.
Okay, other commissioners?
I share Michael's comment. I find that the earlier version sort of have interesting, it's too bad that deviated. And I also agree that the shadow line in this latest version is actually deeper. And I think that's where, if we're concerned about the vertical articulation, maybe the applicant could work with staff to reduce the depth of that, because then there will be less of a emphasis on the vertical line, but, you know, it's neither here nor there. But, you know, this is, this is trying to blend in in a different format.
Okay, other commissioners?
Yeah. Don't even listen to him.
Yeah, I think, if I understand what Wellington is saying, I don't mind so much the, I don't find inappropriate this front view of it, but when you see the view that Michael highlighted, it's, there's something, there is something inappropriate about that. Yeah, and there may be a way, it's not for me to do, but it's, there may be a way to fool around with that, to make that work and eliminate that sort of, the angled view of the verticality. It's obvious, there are obvious ways to...
But what makes that inappropriate? I don't understand. I mean, if it's...
If you want it to.
I'm not the person who made that comment. It's a rhetorical question.
It makes it, it makes it kind of like a giant element as opposed to an elaboration of smaller scale elements, and therefore it has a scale that feels too big for its wishes in a way, you know? It's a big monster as opposed to delicate thing, you know, little pieces. But I'm, I'm okay with it. I don't think that the renderings are doing the project a big service. I think it'll look better in real life, and I'm okay with the depth. I, you know, like I said, I don't think it's a home run, but I think it's, I think it meets the threshold of proportion because it has the scale, it has the scale, it makes reference to the materiality of the earlier building. I mean, there's lots of things about it that I would maybe not do for my job, but it's not, that's too bad for me to lucky for it. Okay. No, I think it's all right.
Other comments?
I just want to comment to Abby you said, because unfortunately, this rendering is not true, because you're almost standing near the street, whereas, in fact, you're seeing it from the sidewalk, from the other view, it would not be, you know. Especially the front façade rendering is not real. I mean, I think that that was just off.
I have, I might end up having a question in my comments. So, first of all, I think the materiality is very nice. I love the color palette. I think it works very well on the building and also within what it surrounds. And in a way, I have no, I can't really tell about the depth, but when I think about it and I look at the building to the right of it in LPC nineteen, those buildings seem, those windows seem to have depth in it also, and so in a way, I think it speaks to it, and I'm not having a problem with that either. I just have, this is just a question I would love to ask the applicant, which is, and this refers back to something that Michael had mentioned in terms of the verticality. Did you look at running the wood horizontally?
It said that it made it look like a mistletoe package.
Oh, okay, okay. Got it, okay. Otherwise, I actually like the top of it.
Any other comments?
Okay, I just want to, but I, I think the approach to this site is very sound. I think that they've made an argument or rationale why it's appropriate to have the material that was there historically but on a different footprint because of the variety of frame houses and wood structures in the neighborhood. I think that the scale is very consistent, and I think it's, it looks, I think it works very well. I think the material, and I would agree with you, I think the palette is soft and sort of gentle, and it's, it's an interesting contemporary approach using materials that you find in the district. So, we see some buildings very often that are very, very articulated and wildly creative, and some are just, I think, more nuanced statements, and I think this is a more nuanced building.
I agree with that. Okay, so, I think that we can move to decision and a con... John?
Do we have any modifications at all? Nope, okay.
I think we're fine.
In the matter of docket number, in the matter of docket number nineteen dash zero one six one four seventy-six Washington Avenue in the Clinton Hill Historic District, the application is to demolish the existing building and construct a new building. I note that the building was altered several times prior to designation as in a highly deteriorated condition and that contemporary shoring has been installed to prevent further deterioration. I recommend approval, noting that the existing building is highly altered and in an advanced state, advanced state of deterioration, and the structural integrity of the building is compromised, that the demolition of the building will result in the elimination of only a limited amount of significant historic fabric, including the non-original cornice dating to the late nineteenth century, that previous campaigns to stabilize and restore the building have revealed extensive damage that cannot be repaired, that although massing of the proposed new building in terms of height and width will not match the original building, its overall volume will be in keeping with the general scale of row houses in this row and other larger wood-framed houses in this historic district, that the proposed parapet, which introduces transparency by the alternating spacing of vertical wood siding, will serve as a transitional element that aligns with its neighboring row houses and provides an interesting contemporary interpretation of this architectural feature, that the proposed material palette consisting of wood tongue and groove and board and battan siding in various patterns and finishes will recall the materiality of the original wood-framed building while contributing to the contemporary design of the building, that the layout of the front areaway featuring a descending concrete ramp and curbs and a large planting area at the remainder of the yard will be consistent with neighboring areaways with stoops and planting areas, that the proposed three-bay fenestration pattern will be in keeping with that of the original building and the neighboring row houses, that although the proposed building will project further into the rear yard than the neighboring row houses, it will occur at the end of a row adjacent to a larger flat house building, limiting its impact on the central green space, that the design of the rear facade featuring a irregular fenestration pattern and wood siding in an alternating pattern will match the height of the neighboring row houses and will be in keeping with the character of the rear facades of residential buildings within the block, that the rear of the building, although moderately visible from the opposite side of the block, will be seen at oblique angles over low structures and a gap in the street wall, that the small bulkhead and mechanical equipment will not be visible over the primary facade and will and will be partially visible over the secondary rear facade as seen through a gap in the street wall, and that the proposed new building will enhance the special architectural and historic character of the Clinton Hill Historic District.
Second, all in favor? Any opposed? Application's approved.
Okay, commissioners, last item is an applicant, application for certificate of appropriateness, docket number 183163. This is 576 Vanderbilt Avenue located within the Prospect Heights Historic District. It's a romanesque revival, Renaissance revival style store and flats building designed by Timothy Remsen and built circa 1891. The application is to construct a rooftop addition. This was last presented on November 15th, 2016.
Good afternoon, commissioners, Abby Hobart Preservation Staff. This application is to construct a rooftop addition at 576 Vanderbilt located on the southwest corner of Vanderbilt Avenue and Bergen Street in Prospect Heights Historic District. So, this application was first reviewed by the commission at a public hearing on November 15th of this year. At that hearing, the commissioners expressed concerns with the proposed addition, recommended that the applicants explore modifying aspects of the design, such as reducing its size, using a darker color palette, modifying the fenestration pattern, and looking for ways to make the addition more site-specific. So, the applicant have revised the proposal and are here to discuss the particulars and changes.
Okay, move to reopen the hearing.
Basically, I'm going to address three points in the design modifications, starting with integration into the existing building in terms of scale and proportion, the color palette and the material choices. So, basically, we'll, we'll start with the three primary views, most visible views for the penthouse addition. One of the, yeah, okay, so, this is the previous iteration, the current iteration. So, this will become more clear in some of the elevation slides, but basically, the massing, we've, we've broken down into a series of dormer-like elements that more closely reflect the bay structure, the irregular basizing rhythm of the base, with a sort of a A, B, C bay rhythm of the addition, which reflects what's going on at the base of the building. A second modification is in the, the color of the metal cladding. We're showing a darker material, which is basically, in these right here, it's a Kynar finished metal, painted metal panel. Previously, we were looking at a Galvano material, which was much more reflective, lighter in color and shinier, which you can pass around. The, the Kynar finished material is significantly darker than the Galvano color material, and would address the, the concerns about the, having a darker color palette for the addition. As an alternative to that, I would also propose a slightly lighter material, which I think at this point we would prefer, but doesn't necessarily correspond to the comments of the, the last meeting that we had, which would be a pre-wethered zinc material, which while slightly lighter in color is, is less shiny and less reflective, which basically would have had an overall darker and more somber effect for the facade. So, these two materials are the standing seam, and this fall apart on the sharp. So, the two materials are the standing seam and the corrugated top metal. This is the view from Bergen Street, looking east towards Vanderbilt Avenue, visibility of the penthouse at this location.
At this time, you have a very visible railing up at the top, and last time you didn't.
We've, we've added that. We looked more into requirements. It was at the suggestion of, of staff that clarified that, that requirement, so the railing.
So, you would have had to have it last time then?
Right, so we, that's an addition, a disruption, so we've added to this. This view, looking from St. Mark's, north on Vanderbilt, you can see the addition that... So, to compare the two versions, previous version, the form, we had a single corner opening with a sort of mansard-like slightly sloped vertical surface in, in standing seam for the corner condition, open with a sort of translation of a dormer-like condition. This window, this facade was a larger window than we're currently showing, so we just flipped. So, some of the variations, starting from this corner, this window has been re-proportioned to align with and carry on the proportions of the rear facade windows of the existing building. The, the bays of the, the large openings have been re-proportioned to create a rhythm more similar to what's happening on the base. We've exaggerated the overhang to create sort of a more dynamic and volumetric form for the addition and sort of accentuate those formal moves. And, oops, we have added the railing, which is a requirement, which we did not show last time, as effectively an admission. The window, you'll see in another slide, the window, the window layout is simplified. And in another material choice, we're proposing a teak panel that would be sealed and stained to match, which effectively is designed to pick up on the, the brick color of the base. So, getting more of a, a color tying with what's happening at the base of the building. So, so now we're looking at a palette of two materials for the top. Plans are fairly similar. The overhang is larger than in the previous version. The windows, the two windows, the, the roof, you can see, we've, we've provided the railing for minimum dimensions to, for fire department access to that roof. So, this is the previous iteration, the larger corner window, the slot. Current iteration, the two dormer-like windows, the, the glazing rhythm simplified, and the railing, which is quite set back from this view. The previous version of the, the rear and the side, I guess side facade, the main change here being to that window. We still have the corrugated siding at these elevations. That window's been re-proportioned. The railing, of course. So, these views are sort of the floating views, showing the two material choices, the teak and the either painted metal or zinc. And we just wanted to go back and look just real quickly again, some of the things that we were looking at. A, a nearby precedent in a romanesque revival style with mansard-like roof, working together with the other typical elements of the architectural style. And the Hanover House in Bradford, U.K., which has a very similar treatment of a series of sort of dormer-like elements dancing across the roofscape. So, these views are the, some closer views, Vanderbilt and Bergen Street looking south with the, the sort of two broken up dormer-like elements, with the, the wood cladding at the inside face. You can also read that in this view.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Any questions? All right, so we can, thank you, we can close the hearing. Right, comments?
I think the railing should be studied to make it much less visible, the top railing.
Did they say that they have to provide it, or?
Yeah, fire department access, the roof, top level, it's just, I think it's, it, it's too visible, but I think it can be made less visible. I think it's, I think it's, you know, it's still peculiar, but I think it, I think it, breaking up the, up those windows does help tie it in with the scale of the building below, and I think it, you know, in the, in the context where there are some notable rooftop additions, I think it's okay.
All right, other comments?
I, I actually also think it's better, and I like the, I like the irregularity of the form. I think the windows are handled very nicely. I, I really, I like the color of the, of the darker material, and in a way, I think my only reservation is the teak, in, in the sense that, I appreciate your referring it back to the building below, but I guess I feel like it, it, you know, you have a lot of things going on, and a solid color would be simpler, and the form itself would be a little, have even more integrity in that way. So, that, that's just my thought.
But you were talking, what was the, you said the?
The teak.
Oh, okay.
The teak. I would, I would, my, my sense is that the teak is not necessary, that I would keep it all one material and one color.
Okay. All right, other comments? Yes, what was it?
I, I like the design. I think it's interesting. Having trained and amira auto, I always have a preference of wood, wood texture, so I, I, I would, I, I would not abandon that, 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 you know, if you want to do further analysis, it's fine, but I think it's, it's always nice to have a warm texture to the detailing.
All right, other comments? Okay, so the commissioners are generally fine with this? Okay, and?
Other than the roof railing, there's, needs to be study.
Right, I think I'm just, I understand it's, they have to provide it, but I would also recommend that they work with staff to see how to lessen its visibility. Okay, all right. Is it adding?
In the matter of 576 Vanderbilt Avenue in Prospect Heights Historic District, it's a romanesque revival, Renaissance revival style store and flats building designed by Timothy Remsen and built circa 1891, and the application is to construct a rooftop addition. I note that the building's style, scale, materials and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Prospect Heights Historic District. I recommend approval, finding that the proposed work will not alter, eliminate or conceal any significant architectural features at the building, that in the most prominent views of the addition from public thoroughfares, the placement form, modest height and simple detailing of the addition will help to recall the appearance of a group of smaller accretions, which will help the structure to be consistent in character with a variety of accretions found within the immediate streetscape views within this historic district, that the alternating pattern of sloped metalwork and glazing with projecting overhangs at the east side of, of the addition will relate well to the vertical bands of the windows and projecting brickwork elements at the eastern facade of the building and help the addition to harmonize with the scale and proportions of the building while also supporting the addition's identity as a modern structure, that the day, dark gray finish of the metalwork will be compatible with the medium color tones of the building facades and in keeping with finishes of typical rooftop accretions throughout the streetscape, further helping the addition to relate to its context and remain a secondary presence, and that the proposed railings will be typical in placement and material and simply designed and only seen at a distance from public thoroughfares, however, we'd like for the applicant to work with staff to reduce those, that visibility of the rail.
Second, all in favor? Any opposed? So, application's approved, and that ends today's session. Thank you.